Evening, West Orange. This is Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Welcome to the Township Council meeting for April 4th, 2023. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Council President, Council President Williams.
Good evening, West Orange. Today is Thursday, April 4th, meeting nine of the Council of West Orange. Madam Clark, will you please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present. Thank you. Well, council members, public, tonight we have an extremely light council conference agenda. We originally had planned a presentation, but we had the dates incorrect. So this evening, we are going to bring to you our council liaison announcements.
Councilwoman, are you ready for the evening?
Sure. Thank you. Go on, the cup.
Good evening. So last week, we went to conference to Downtown USA that was held in Boston, Massachusetts. Myself, Director Brill, her admin, Amy McCambell, John Mack, our chairman, and Alex from Lightbulle Coffee Shop, as you know him. We had a business owner this year attend. Well, John's also a business owner, so to have two business owners there was instrumental, picked up a lot of strategies, talked to, got so many people from out of state and state. Picked up a lot of great information, looking forward to bringing you a thoughtful report. We want to congratulate our colleagues over in Metuchen. Each, each year Downtown USA, and Mr. Fagan will remember this, when he would, used to travel with us, would pick the top three downtowns and highlight them in the nation. And Metuchen came in second this year. And they, what's amazing is they brought their, they made their vibrant downtown within three years. Isaac over there has been, has done a tremendous job. So again, we look forward to bringing you a full presentation, picked up a lot of economic development strategies. Not, you know, pending matters maybe later, not so sure if we even want to go in the direction of getting consultant after talking to a few of the, some of our neighbors that have gone that route and hasn't been successful. We're learning that entrepreneur boot camp is the way to go and to just really give our, our business owners the support it needs. Travel to some local downtowns outside of Boston, because obviously Boston's a great big city. But on the way there and while we were there, we went through Worcester and Salem. And, you know, just again, just gathering information, we're close here in our downtown of all our strategies and what we're doing. And I'm going to tell you two things that are instrumental into making our downtown successful. One would be the parking. And as we know, Mr. Gross, I'm always in his ear, we have to do something. And I, there needs to be something for this budget, for the land a lot. That's in Torrey Corner. Those businesses can't survive without us making a change soon, very soon. Parking's instrumental there. And also housing. More housing needs to be brought to the downtown. You need foot traffic, you need people to live there. So again, look forward to bringing you some thoughtful report. And I believe Thursday night, Mr. Fagan, I'm not sure if you have the town, the town's rec department's spring fling info Thursday? Yeah, okay, if you get that form, I just thought of that now, I forgot to get the flyer to you. So we have that celebrating the holidays this week. That's always a successful event for, for a little ones here in the township. And that's it, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
No new announcements.
Councilman Rutherford?
Just one with regard to the joint meeting. We've been doing some work there. I will give further color and context to my council colleagues at a later date. But we... How do I say? Because some of this is executive session, so I'll have to check, check you guys later. Actually, let me just, so that I don't misspeak, some things are happening at the, at the joint meeting. They're all positive. And I think I'll just leave it at that. Yeah, let me leave it at that, because I don't want to misspeak and then, you know, cause a problem down the road. So, but we met three times this month. So, yeah, that's unusual. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, just a couple of things on the Environmental Commission. We had the Raway River cleanup on April 2nd, which was Sunday. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I had some holiday plans with family, but I understand everyone had a wonderful time. And thank you to all of the volunteers who did come out. I know that it's very much appreciated. We also have coming up on April 27th Arbor Day, where we are doing some tree planting over at Redwood School. So that should be fun as well. And then next month, we have a number of different activities coming up as well, but I'll hold them.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. From Planning Board, next Planning Board meeting is scheduled for the 12th. We've had quite a few applications. West Orange is a busy, growing community. Please stay tuned for additional items from the Planning Board so that you can stay abreast of the new developments in West Orange. Certainly, if you have been on the internet, you have seen that on the Target site, there has been a location identified in West Orange, so stay tuned for that information. I'm sure that we're all looking forward to not having to drive up to Route 10 and how that is going to invigorate the businesses in this community as well, having a freestanding business of that magnitude. So I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have for liaison announcements. Again, the calendar is available on the municipal website, which can be located at westorange.org. At the very bottom of the landing page is the municipal calendar that lists all of our upcoming meetings and events. Also, if you are not registered for West Orange announcements, please go on and sign up. You can sign up for municipal announcements, you can sign up for Downtown Alliance announcements, but the information is available for you. And we encourage and ask that you always just continue to look at the website for new and upcoming events, things that are happening in West Orange. I think that, yes, Councilwoman?
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, Council, Council President, just piggyback on your Target announcement. So just noticing some chatter and some hearing some folks talk, concerns about, you know, traffic in the area. And I just want to remind folks that are, you know, haven't been here as long as 20 years ago or longer, both the Essex Green Shopping Plaza and, we used to call it the Caldoor Park Shopping Plaza, or even Corvettes, if you're, Rosary remembers Corvettes and Joe Fagan, I'm sure, and Sue. They were very extremely vibrant shopping closets. And Essex Green, too, years ago, Executive Drive had multiple of filled office tenants in there. So again, I know folks are concerned, but years ago, we had, you know, they were packed lots. Like you couldn't, you'd, you know, parking would go all the way to Prospect Avenue. And the way they're set up, and I'm sure they're going to make improvements with traffic consultants and whatnot, because obviously there's more people in the area. But just, just, we really need to be excited for these new improvements to our township, because as that brings more visitors to West Orange, it's also going to help our smaller business owners in, in other areas. So that's such a great announcement, having Target finally make that official.
Also, would just like to mention that on yesterday, August 2nd, for the first time in the history of West Orange, we raised the flag honoring autism. What a beautiful moment. I want to thank you to the Singh family for advocating and bringing that awareness to West Orange. It was a beautiful, beautiful flag raising. They have been advocating for over 20 years with the new foundation that's eight years old for autism awareness and advocacy. So just keep in mind that this month is Autism Awareness Month. And it is such a beautiful, beautiful experience to have the opportunity to engage with those that are differently abled. And one of the key takeaways from yesterday's event was that we need to be inclusive of those with autism. While we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we also need to understand that those that are differently abled should also be included in our day-to-day activities and encouraged to be a part of our community. In addition to the flag raising, also wanted to bring the community to aware that on Monday, and thanks to Essex County and our wonderful county executive, Joe DiVincenzo, for allowing West Orange to be the host of a food distribution. I don't think that we need to be reminded that we are still having difficult times in many families across our state and across our nation. Food insecurity is real, and it is something that we are greatly appreciative of for us to have and host an opportunity to help families and others in West Orange. So thank you for that opportunity, Mr. DiVincenzo. And again, just making sure West Orange is a part of the county, the community, and has the capacity to help others. So we are at 6:45. We have a few additional announcements from Mr. Fagan. So we will give Mr. Fagan the microphone at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few brief announcements outside of what I will be saying during my public comment. Mayor McCartney asked me to announce, and this just came in this afternoon, but West Orange is back on the list for Tree City USA. The application has been officially approved, and as I say, this just happened this afternoon. Otherwise, I would have had a graphic and some more information about that. I want to mention something that Councilwoman Castellino said about the conferences. And everything she said is true about them. But the energy that you can pick up at those conferences is truly inspiring. I've been to a few of them, as Councilwoman mentioned, and the energy is really what energizes the group to come back and implement those ideas in, in town here. And it was mentioned the Caldoor Lot. Yes, I remember the Corvette slot. Actually, when Corvettes first opened, there was Pasta Cottage, where Jersey Mike's is, and it was the, was the go-to place. But before it was Corvettes, it was the Palace Driving Range right across from, from Palace Cabin. Now, of course, I don't remember that, but I've seen the pictures. And as was mentioned, is the Spring Fling. This is, this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30, is in front of West Orange High School. They have live action skate demo, and the Easter Bunny will be there. So it's a, be a fun event. Hopefully, the weather is swinging our way. And it will be a good time to come out and, and support and see the live action skate demo. There's going to be food trucks, there's going to be a petting zoo, there's going to be DJ Flo. If you haven't heard DJ Flo, it's worth coming out just for that alone. So, okay, that's it. I'll resume at the podium when my public comment comes up. I'm sorry. I could speak to 7 o'clock. Oh, I just have one thing I'd like to add. For West Orange residents or sports fans, as you may be aware, the hockey season is winding down. And as we approach the Stanley Cup playoffs, it's really worth pointing out that even though the sport of hockey probably dates to the early part of the 19th century, that the first time ever a hockey match was filmed was here in West Orange at Crystal Lake. And you're not going to believe the date, it was February 24th, 1898. So two years before the turn of the century. And although it wasn't Thomas Edison, it was William Heiss working for the Edison Filming Company. It was just a 32nd film, and it's certainly not hockey as we recognize it today. And it had been mislabeled in the catalog as Newark, New Jersey, Crystal Lake, Newark, New Jersey. But probably close to 20 years ago, I had discovered that in the film, there was an ice house in the back, seen in the background of the hockey match on ice film. And that ice house positively is at Crystal Lake. There's many pictures and postcards that show it. And when I checked with the Hockey Hall of Fame, the Hockey Hall of Fame, the foremost expert on hockey films, Paul Paducah, confirmed that West Orange, in fact, was the first place. And they had known about it for many years. And it's, it doesn't look much different than it is today. Obviously, hockey was played on a frozen pond. But it was railroad workers from Montreal who were visiting or passing through West Orange. And as hockey is to Canadians, as baseball is to Americans, they, they played a hockey game there. Why they're in West Orange, we may never know, hopefully someday. But that's as much as I can offer you as we approach the Stanley Cup playoffs and the many local teams that will be involved in that tournament. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
All right, so we have about...
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Council President. In Economic Development, we have another meeting. I think it's Thursday, the 27th of this month. That will be our third or fourth so far. And we are inviting solar companies to present to us. We are excited about the opportunity to embark on a project that will bring solar to West Orange, provide some much-needed financial relief in the form of savings, lower carbon emissions. So if you're interested in finding out more about that, you are invited to visit the West Orange website and join us on the 27th for the Economic Development Committee. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. All right, so we have about 10 minutes before we will start our council meeting. So at this time, I am going to ask for a brief recess for about 10 minutes, and then we will see you back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the public, to my nation, to its laws, to its citizens.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Good evening, West Orange. Thank you for joining us this evening for our council meeting. We would like to begin with public comment. As always, if you would like to comment, we start off the meeting with giving you an opportunity to do so. After we receive comments from our Public Information Officer, each person is invited to the podium if you would like to speak. You have five minutes to share your remarks. However, before you start your remarks, please identify yourself with your name and your address. Mr. Fagan?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I am Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer for the Township of West Orange. I have a few brief announcements to make this evening. I'd like to start with, there's a wellness and safety workshop tomorrow, actually. I know that for people who are going to watch this meeting recorded, this won't help out. But for those watching live, this is a very good seminar. It's going to be held at the Rent a House, and there's going to be several speakers. And I have attended these in the past, and there's great information of everything from awareness about common fraud scams to abuse of elder people and the life-saving file of life tool by the West Orange Police Fire Department. And what they do is they place a folder right by your refrigerator magnetic. And I know my parents, when they were alive, they had that, and that provided very crucial information for first responders. And then, of course, a representative from the West Orange Police Department will be there describing the many programs, especially as they benefit older Americans. Light refreshments will be served. If you can make it, it's at Ken Gaston Street. That's the community room at the John Rent a House, and you can park in the Town Hall parking lot. Mayor McCartney also asked me to bring attention to New Jersey Transit's emergency bus service. They have altered several of their routes that are going to take effect April 10th. I believe the one that will apply to West Orange is 191D, and it will provide alternate service for Decamp's Route 66 to service customers in West Orange and Montclair. And it will depart the Port Authority Bus Terminal from Gate 208, Door 1. Please don't let my presentation be your only source of information. Please confirm that, because I'm sure that the schedules are going to change. But as of, you can look on our website, westorange.org, in New Jersey Transit, to confirm the information to your specific times of travel. On Saturday, April 22nd, there is a National Drug Takeback Day. Now, the West Orange Police Department is participating in this, and this is statewide, and it might even be national, national. But regardless of that, the West Orange Police Department has a drop box, so to speak. It's a recycled mailbox. It's in the lobby of the West Orange Police Department, and it's monitored 24/7. You can walk in there at any time and drop off unneeded medication for safe disposal. Speaking of the West Orange Police Department, April is Distracted Driving Month now. And they will enforce, you drive, you text, you pay. Now, distracted driving doesn't happen just in April. It happens 365 days a year. This is to just bring awareness to the fact that distracted driving, as reported by many important authorities, is a, almost a 50% cause of traffic accidents. I know that we're all guilty of it. I found myself a few times this week realizing it's Distracted Driving Month, not even to look over at my cellphone. So yes, you drive, you text, you pay. It's a statewide enforcement campaign. Also, on March 31st, Mayor McCartney reappointed Rudolpho Rodriguez as a Deputy Mayor in West Orange. Now, that is just an honorary title. And Rudolpho does a great job at promoting the town of West Orange in his role as Deputy Mayor. I want to also bring up that on Saturday, March 25th, there was a tremendous event at the Cody Arena, South Mountain Arena. And you can see in the lower left there, West Orange fighter Garrett, number 16, Gary Brow, scoring a goal. By the way, he does not, no longer work for the Fire Department. He signed with the Devils. But no, it was, it was a great game. Lynette Shear sang the National Anthem. Mayor McCartney welcomed the crowd. But the, the biggest mystery of the evening was this girl in the pink jacket who was photobombing with all the council members and the mayor who were there in support. And thank you very much, Council and Mayor, for coming out and supporting this great cause. And I want to give special mention to Councilman Rutherford. We had discussed privately that he was going to come, and when the night rolled around, he actually got stuck with the family commitment, and he still came by to support the veterans and to say hello. So thank you very much, Councilman Rutherford. As was mentioned, history was made on the front steps of Town Hall yesterday with Autism Acceptance Month. Now, in the past, this has been called awareness, but I believe that this has been refined and rebranded as an acceptance for autism. Because it's, it's not that, it's not us being aware, it's us accepting them. And there was a very poignant flag raising by this individual. I forget his name, forgive me, but he was the son of the organizer of the event, and he had a, a smile on his face just beaming from ear to ear, allowing him to raise that flag. And a good time was had by all. Mayor McCartney addressed the crowd, and the weather cooperated, and it was a very successful event. Mayor McCartney also asked me to mention, again, that we are hiring. I have talked about public works, driver, school crossing guard, public health nurse. But you see that there's many positions available, and you can visit our website, westorange.org backslash jobs, or just westorange.org, and you should be able to navigate through this and find this very easily. Also, history was made in council chambers today as Rose Toussaint and Jules, Jilly Swin, I'm sure I'm mispronouncing those names, I apologize, but they got married by Mayor McCartney today here in council chambers. And of course, I didn't pass on the opportunity to offer the newlyweds some wedding advice, having been married for 44 years, and I explained to them that first comes the engagement ring, then comes the wedding ring, and then comes the suffering. And I think the groom took a little bit much to heart. Anyway, if anybody, we will have public comment session. You'll raise your hand during public comment, to those in the Zoom audience. If you missed the opportunity to speak during public comment, public comment is closed. You can contact the council at westorange.org to, to ask them any questions. And this is my contact information. If anybody needs to get in touch with me about any questions you saw here tonight, everything is available on westorange.org. Council President, that concludes my report, and thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Is there, yes, please. Ms. Morelli?
Rosary Morelli, I have to tell you where I live. Ralph Road.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe gave me a segue. Tomorrow morning, the program that he's talking about at the Rent a House is one for senior citizens and their safety. I think if anybody of you can go, young, old, or whatever, you should go. I don't think you're aware of how many seniors are abused and how much they suffer. And I'm on the board, the Essex County Seniors and Disabled People's Advisory Board. And one woman who's going to be there is also on the board. And she is the, she works at Essex County College, I think she's a teacher. And she ran a program in Irvington, and the mayor there, and I can go back to Obama, where they discovered during, they, they do the White House Conference on Aging reviews, interviews, they go all over the country and talk to seniors about what do, what do you have? What would you like to have? What do seniors need? And so forth. And when Obama read the results of their effort, and it was a big one, it's the whole, the whole country, he was stunned by how much elder abuse had increased. And he was so upset by it. He went back and had them update the Older Americans Act, because they never paid attention to it. So that's up to date. The White House Conference on Aging was very effective with the report. And you go online and read that, is on, I guess it's just, go on White House Conference on Aging on one of the federal websites. There was something else I wanted to talk about that was really so impressive. Oh, the program that we had in Irvington, the mayor there was very impressed with the figures that he was hearing about with this elder abuse increasing. And he had, and it was a tremendous turnout. He had a session there, and this Louise Leighton, who's going to speak tomorrow, will be there. It was there, and she had a very impressive board of certified professionals, social workers and all. And the title of, obviously a good mayor, elder abuse, not on my watch. It brought a lot of us to tears, because you can't believe, and this is authentic, I mean, it's true, it's documented proof that this is happening. So tomorrow's program will have some of that, and also the safety of senior citizens. So if you can get there, or you know anybody who wants to go, you should. It's going to be very informative. It's going to be very informative. Thank you.
Mr. Fagan, could you please repeat the time that that program starts?
Yes. It started.
10:00 AM.
It starts at 10:00, I'm sorry. Repeat that, because the audio wasn't be recorded. The Older Adult Wellness and Safety Workshop starts tomorrow morning, April 5th, 2023, at 10:00 AM, and at last, 12:00 PM. They will have brochures available there, as well as a lot of good information. And as I mentioned earlier, even though this is going to be time, people listening tonight can make arrangements to go tomorrow. Those watching on tape are not going to be able to attend. But you could always contact Laura Van Dyke, Senior Services Director, if you have any concerns or questions.
Thank you. We'll see if there's a possibility that we can get that recorded in some capacity.
I don't know if provisions have been made for that.
Not a problem. We'll scramble. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to have public comment? Yes, please, come forward. As a reminder, just state your name and address by the record, Mr. DeBowie.
Todd DeBowie. Ten Burnett Terrace. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to talk about the resolution to rescind the Trank renewal of his contract and say that I support that resolution vehemently. And for a number of reasons, and reasons that I don't think have been raised. One reason's been raised, which is the New Jersey Supreme Court decision. You know, listening to Mr. Trank talk about how he did everything right up until, you know, well, everything right during the course of the case, and justification was the prior court rulings. I take exception with that, because the Supreme Court ruling overturns, you know, the lower court rulings. So, that's one example. Another example is incorrect commentary from Mr. Trank at public meetings, specifically the Rock Spring meeting, where he suggested that his legal efforts resulted in the transfer of all risk to Kemper, which is a bald-faced lie. All the risk is not with Kemper, it's with the town. Because we're losing a million three. I mean, the numbers don't lie. So, I can't even believe that he made that comment. But then, let's talk about his efforts to declare Essex Green an area in need of redevelopment. And a project that was 75% occupied at the time with many credit tenants, that's not an area in need of redevelopment by any stretch of any imagination. And no wonder it didn't happen. What else? I mean, Edison Lofts is a clear example as well, and decades of nothing happening. Some of that, some of that, not all, falls on the legal aspects of that transaction. So, those are my reasons for supporting that resolution, and I hope you guys will as well. My other question has to do with something we haven't heard of that in a while, which is Rock Spring itself, and what's going on there. I was originally one of the people that agreed with the acquisition. But I didn't have all the information at the time. I didn't have the information as to how that came about, how it came about that the township was the buyer instead of the county. Knowing the history, you know, I think I'm looking at it a little differently now. The prospect of having certain parcels developed, the parcels that Mr. Parisi had proposed, all fall on Northfield Avenue. And at the time, I was supportive of that kind of development taking place. But the sites that are proposed now are all on residential roads, Walker Road, Under Cliff. And that's all single-family homes. And the only condos in the area are multifamily is the condo right at the corner of Northfield and Walker. But further into the neighborhood, there is no multifamily, it's single-family. And so, I think it's my feeling that allowing multifamily in that neighborhood would be a negative impact on the area. It's not in keeping with what the area is. You know, I think we should just leave that condo development as the exception in that area for multifamily. And I actually think that there's some credence to exploring the possible transaction and sale to the county. It's not the only option. And there are other options that need to be explored, such as
Your time is up.
Some other type of arrangement with Kemper.
Thank you, Mr. DeBowie.
So.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, members of the council, and Madam Chair. As we are all aware by now.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Brent Breaker Scott, 75 Nestor Road.
Thank you.
As we are all aware by now, for the first time in history, a former president of the United States was indicted and was arraigned in criminal court today. This historical event demonstrated the added to that no one is above the law. We are and have been living in a moment of what I can only refer to as a new devil speak, where up is down and down is up. This dystopian worldview posits that if one doesn't like the results of an election, deny the election was valid. And here we are at the vessel that is closest to the people, local government. And right here in this local government, we have individuals within the administration, specifically the legal department, which you're considering tonight, trying to subvert the law as written, change the law to suit their own ends. And if that doesn't work, simply deny that the law doesn't say what it says or mean what it means. This is a bizarre reenactment of who's on first, what's on second, and I don't know who's on third. I'm speaking about the zoning board of adjustment. For years, one individual, Bill Newark, has chaired the board consecutively in violation of the existing ordinance, which reads, the chair may not serve consecutive terms. Just a few weeks ago, at your March 21st meeting, a proposal was put before the council to change the ordinance to allow consecutive terms by the chair. This council voted it down. Councilwoman Gabbar Michael, Councilman Rutherford, Councilwoman Starpa voted no. The measure failed. But up is down and down is up. And so, the zoning board is currently operating under a cloud possibly illegal, and inviting applicants whose request, if denied, might sue the township because the board is improperly constituted. It was under the direction of this legal department that just lost a precedent-setting Supreme Court case. And that told the mayor she could vote, cast the vote on the town council. And this is the department that's supposed to arbitrate whether or not this chairman, who'd been serving illegally for years, can continue to do so in complete disregard to what this council voted on March 21st. I don't know our claim to have certain privilege. And I don't understand a legal department that supposedly reportedly works for the public that simply thinks it can interpret the law as they please. No, it means this, it doesn't mean that. Oh, well, the council voted, but it doesn't matter. As a voter, as a taxpayer, and as an American, I am disgusted with this legal department. I'm disgusted with its disrespect for the majority will of this council that voted on March 21st to uphold the law. And the law is, as chair, you don't get to serve consecutive terms. So, I encourage this council to inform this legal department as it currently constitutes. Whether or not you keep it is up to you. But on April 20th, when the zoning board meets again, it will have to select new leadership, because this council voted by a majority of three to two to uphold the current law. It shouldn't even have had to do it, but someone put it forward to change the law for this one person, because this one person apparently has some kind of privilege that the rest of us don't have, to just plonk the law and do whatever he or she wants to forever. I encourage you to uphold the law and to make sure that the zoning board chair steps down, because he is already in violation of the law. Finally, I would like to just suggest to this council that you really need your own attorney. I've worked for a council person in New York City, I've worked for a congressman. I have never known a town council, any legislative body, that didn't have their own attorney, their own legal counsel to advise them. This is about separation of powers, the legislative and the executive. You're the legislative. You should not be listening or have to rely on the word of the executive attorney. You need your own counsel, and I encourage you to butt in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else in council chambers that would like to make public comment? Yes, Mr. Pagliisi.
Hi, Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. First of all, thank you to Council President for bringing up the event yesterday. Over the past few years, the county has run about 60 of those. It's a good feeling to be able to help people. It's also, at the same time, a bad feeling to see that there are a lot of people that need that assistance, especially going through these difficult times the past three years. So, thank you for those words. Joe also took a little segment from my speech night about Drug Takeback Day. So, again, we just encourage you to do that on April 22nd, but then also all year round, because the box in West Orange and in other municipalities, it's not just open on that one Saturday, it's open 365 days a year. Last week, we did have a awards program. For the month of March, we hosted a student art exhibit in the Essex County Martin Luther King Building with the Art Educators of New Jersey. This is the first time in three years that we were able to hold that event because of the pandemic. But it was the 16th time that we've gathered with them. And there were students from Edison Middle School and West Orange High School who had their artwork displayed in that venue. So, we really, we appreciate the artwork. It livens up the place. Everyone who walks into the buildings always stops, takes a look. So, students around Essex County were able to get some notoriety for their creativeness and their artisticness. And then, just finally, I think I mentioned this once before, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is May 6th, which is a Saturday, and then Computer and Electronics Recycling Day is May 20th, also a Saturday. Both of those events are at our Public Works Facility in Cedar Grove, which is 99 West Bradford Avenue. That information is on our website. And we just encourage people to help protect the environment in a local way and get some dangerous materials out of our waste stream. Thank you.
Just one question before you step away. With the hazardous materials, are you allowed to bring in tires?
We have a separate event for that, and that has not been scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
But when we do that, it's usually used tires and paper shredder.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fagan, if there's anyone on the Zoom audience, and can you?
U.S. Council President, any member of the Zoom audience, raise your hand, and you'll be put in the queue. Mr. Tepar, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you please let us know how many people are participating via Zoom this evening?
So far, there are three hands raised, and there are 53 attendees.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to those in the Zoom audience. For your participation.
Mr. Tepar, can you hear us, please speak?
Good evening, Sirat Tepar, the public advocate. I just wanted to take a minute to discuss the last town council meeting where my contract was discussed. I was actually very deeply saddened to see what transpired, because it really showed a lack of due diligence by certain, and not all, but certain members of the council. The basis of your refusal to renew my contract was, first, that you have not seen me at town council meetings previously, and second, based on certain emails that you received. So, as far as the criticism that I haven't appeared at town council meetings, couldn't we say the same for you for not appearing at any zoning or planning board meetings? And if you actually read the ordinance and see what my powers and duties are, they're only related to land use variances. That's it. And either you knew that and deliberately misled the public, or you didn't know that, which says something about your preparedness. Now, second, as to the emails that you received, these were only from one specific group, who's led by one specific person that was mad at one point that I didn't go to a Livingston Board meeting to fight a personal battle on her behalf. Something that, if you should know, is clearly out of my purview. So, they decided to write you an email complaining about four specific items. Now, keep in mind, I was appointed in September of 2021. The four items they complained about were, first was the Cube Smart, which was decided and approved four months before I was appointed. Second was preservation of the library, which was decided approximately three years before I was appointed. Third was signage on 280, which was never before the planning or zoning board while I've been the public advocate. And fourth is the Ranjolyn devastation, which was never an application before the planning or zoning board. So, I'm not sure what I could have done within my power about that. So, the fact that you took those emails at face value and didn't look to see the accuracy of any of these claims, it's scary. West Orange deserves better than that, because either you knew that they were incorrect and still went with it, or you didn't do your due diligence. And it's sad if you're not really going to do any due diligence on something before you vote on the item. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Mr. Fagan.
Cindy Matu Brown, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, apologies. I'm sorry, am I unmuted?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. Hello, council members and West Orange residents. I had not intended on speaking this evening, but I did hear, and please pardon the dogs in the background.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Cindy Matu Brown, Corville Circle, West Orange. Thank you, Madam Clerk. My reason for calling in is just to make sure that the public is aware, particularly since I love the fact that there was an autism awareness flag raising in town, which is amazing. But I also wanted to add to that, for the public's benefit, the fact that West Orange Special Education Parent Advocacy Commission is commissioned by the state for the Board of Education. And I think that moving forward, that this should be something that, if there is a flag raising or even events with the mayor's program for individuals with special gifted talented, that they should make sure to reach out to the West Orange Advisory Parent Board, because it is something that we can all benefit from. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that I know for a fact that the chair of the West Orange CPAC, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Board, was not aware of the flag raising. I think that we should better communicate with the school board and making sure that we're raising awareness and that every parent is aware of what is happening with special education resources. I do know that they have many events with the school board district, but I wanted to make sure that, as the public is listening, that they understand that West Orange Board of Education does have the WOCPAC, which is West Orange Special Education. Board of Education does have the WOCPAC, which is West Orange Special Education Advocacy Commission, commissioned by the state for the West Orange Board of Education, that parents are able to access them. And I want to share, if you will, for a moment, the email for that WOCPAC, which is W O S E A P Chair. So it's WOCPACChair@gmail.com. They do amazing work with our schools. But it would be great to make sure that all of the parents in West Orange who have students with special needs and not to mention the mayor's program for specially gifted individuals all collaborate on the same focus, which is to advance and provide opportunities for students and individuals with special needs. So that's why I was calling in. Thank you so very much, Council President.
Welcome. Thank you.
Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. Good evening. Two weeks ago, Bill Rutherford made the reasonable request for the total legal fees that were paid to Town Attorney Mr. Trank. I would like to be added to that, a line item accounting to include the outside attorneys that have been engaged, as we have endured many of these attorneys' participation during the redevelopment odysseys. The legal fees paid to Mr. Trank and his associates should also be noted for actions that constitute obstruction of citizens' reasonable requests for public information via Oprah. I also believe that there are other lawsuits that the public is not even aware of relating to the Police and Fire Department that were alluded to in the previous town council meeting. I'd also like to remind this council that Mr. Trank actually hired a lawyer paid for by the public to prevent the public from asking questions of the expert witness at the planning board hearing for the redevelopment of Executive Drive. So not only was that insulting, but costly. And so these figures of legal fees should go back at least five years. You know, it's quite embarrassing that even after losing a Supreme Court case, Mr. Trank was then graduated to a four-year contract and given additional duties. I believe at this time, and after this most recent embarrassingly bad advice on the tie-breaking vote for his own contract, where it was suggested that it was legal for the mayor to break a tie vote despite the law being clear and precise that the mayor shall have no vote on the town council. In addition, during the meeting, Mr. Kazer intervened to say that lawsuits should not be mentioned in a public meeting. That isn't true. The details may not be mentioned, but the fact that there is a lawsuit absolutely should be mentioned. Because of these reasons, both Mr. Kazer and Mr. Trank must resign or not be reappointed. And if they will not, then action must be taken. The public and the town council deserve a knowledgeable, respectful administration. And if that's not enough, this council must refuse to continue any meeting past ten P M. Also, tonight's agenda is once again acceptably, unacceptably too long, and it's too vague. There are many resolutions without proper titles, which means the public has to open each and every resolution to see what it pertains to. So to sum up, all the legal bills should be documented and publicized. No new contracts should be written for the current attorneys. Mr. Kazer's contract should be canceled. And council members, please initiate a resolution that no meeting shall be held later than ten P M, so the public can actively participate with bright eyes and alertness. I suggest you find a new lawyer to write your resolutions. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga. Mr. Fagan?
Sheila Lefkowitz, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Sheila Lefkowitz, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay, my name is Sheila Lefkowitz, seven oh three Pleasant Valley Way. Good evening, everyone. The comments of and then one moment, please. Good evening. I agree with Brent Scott. I am in favor of the term limits on the zoning board chairman for the same reasons he is. I watched the Supreme Court hearing on redevelopment. Were you pleased with West Orange's legal counsel there? The comments of Mr. Trank there, as well as in town meetings, was very fast-paced and very hard for me to follow. And it seemed that his speech was very, very pressured. The arguments were less than stellar. What options do we have to improve our legal representation? I also think that the town council needs its own legal counsel and for the same reasons that Brent Scott stated, so I won't repeat. To everyone in Zoom and in chambers, please take note that people in West Orange are following what's going on in chambers. People I speak to are not pleased with the many of the issues presented and how they are being handled and addressed. Please be sure to reach the New Jersey Jewish link coming out tomorrow. And you'll see an article about a new advocacy group called Grassroots that is beginning in my synagogue congregation, A A B J and D. I encourage our members and allies to raise their voices about local issues. We are celebrating Passover and Easter this week. I wish everyone a happy and prayerful holiday. And as soon as the holidays are over, I hope we'll all get back to work and see many more community members speaking out without fear and not to be paralyzed with apathy. And remember, your voice matters.
Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. Mr. Fagan?
There are no other hands raised, but I want to point out that the hands that are raised are individuals who already spoke, and they should contact the town council via email at towncouncil@westorange.org to continue any dialogue with the township council.
Or perhaps they forgot to lower their hand.
I can let them back in if you.
Oh, absolutely not. Everybody's entitled to one opportunity in five minutes, so we've had that opportunity. Thank you. Public comment is now closed. So I will take an opportunity to respond to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi, for always giving us informative information. And Ms. Morelli, thank you always for advocating on behalf of seniors. I look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the workshop. In addition to that workshop for our older adults, also wanted to just advise the public that the students from West Orange High School, when we started Read Across America in March, will also be going back to the Renner and Degnan House on Thursday to read to seniors as well. So whether or not you reside in the building, if you would like to participate in Read Across America with our Mountaineer mentors, please feel free. They will begin at twelve fifteen, and you have options of participation at either the Renner House or the Degnan House, and they read for about an hour and fifteen minutes. It's a wonderful, engaging, intergenerational opportunity with our high school students. Mr. Devovy, regarding your comments, thank you so much. We will get to that rescission of the resolution, and we will comment at that time. Mr. Scott, the zoning board. I am going to refer to the memorandum that was circulated to members of the council. Unfortunately, the information as it has come to you is unfortunately incorrect. This council did not have the authority to set the timetable for the zoning board. And that may also include the planning board, so I'm sure that will come into question. Therefore, while you think it was an error for us to vote, quite frankly, it was an air for us to actually believe that we had the opportunity to vote. So as far as what will be happening, that the current chair is serving in violation, all of those statements are inaccurate, and the zoning board will continue to function. Thank you to the public advocate for making us aware of your tenure, the unfortunate advocacy from groups and members of a specific group about why you should not have been reappointed. And again, I've spoken to you directly and do hope that my council colleagues will make decisions based on facts as opposed to emails that we receive that may or may not be from specific individuals. Thank you, Ms. Matu Brown, for making sure that we connect all the dots with community autism awareness and WOCPAC. Certainly, we will try and do a better job of making sure all engaged parties have the information and that we can do things coordinated co-op collaboratively and coordinate much better together. Ms. Malanga, again, we'll get to those comments. And Ms. Lefkowitz, as always, thank you for your advocacy. I do not agree that people don't believe that they have a voice. I believe that we have continued to encourage for all people to have a voice and to to communicate with us, whether they are comfortable communicating openly or privately. And we are all available to to hear the comments, and our concerns are with the public. That's all I have, Councilwoman.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Let me start with thanking to our former colleague, Councilwoman Two Brown, for coming on this evening and you know, great points. I know that group, they work really hard. Both Gina and Alex have done great things for our community and our and our children through the years. And yeah, everyone, and I hope the school people, Mr. Gross too, were were notified of of one event like that happens. Our school district and personally going back years ago, we have one of the best autistic programs in the state of New Jersey. We are proud of what we do for all our our students and and, you know, so they they really need to make sure that.
Superintendent was was in attendance, and so.
And usually they go out and, you know, send it out to their mailing list when we invite them to events like that. But it, everyone should be notified because that was a great event. I felt bad. I was out of town, just got back this morning, so I had to miss it. Okay, uh, Mr. Fagan, I'm glad you brought up New Jersey Transit. I know we've been getting a lot of emails on that and and folks are in panic and rightfully so. When you buy a home, you know, we, you know, we're on the bus, the bus lines, and for, you know, them to pull the plug like that is alarming, to say the least. But unfortunately, it goes by ridership and also the times, you know, that meant, you know, people just aren't traveling to the city. And we saw this a little bit during the pandemic, and unfortunately, things are getting better, but you know, this is the aftermath of the pandemic. We'll continue to make calls. I know I talked to chief earlier today. Him, the mayor, on several calls with New Jersey Transit. Very upset that Pleasant Valley Way wasn't worked into that route. You can pick up the, you can park. There is a public parking permit parking at the Mississippi Lot, and it's 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 low. It's not the fix that people are gonna want right now, but it is an option. And I had a few other suggestions I had I had for the for the chief, so. Again, we're going to keep advocating, but they're a private company. And New Jersey Transit has a, you know, the other towns, and they're going by the ridership. But they're gonna, you know, again, keep getting on the calls and see what we could do to make that better for our residents.
Councilwoman, if I just may interject, pardon the interruption, that slide is up available on our website at westorange.org. And I should remind the public that that rule change takes effect April tenth. And it likely will be updated as they find out what works and what doesn't work. But they can continue to check our website for the latest updates. And certainly, any changes to that schedule, we pushed out through our hyper-local media outlets. And once again, I pardon the interruption.
No, not at all. Thank you for the information. And Mr. Pagliisi, again, I I want to echo my comments made by my colleague for the, you know, again, these bless you. The food distribution, so instrumental. Again, another aftermath of the pandemic that, you know, times are still tough for a lot of folks. And I just want to thank everyone I neglected and mentioned in my report earlier. But we have been getting information back from our restaurant owners from Restaurant Week. And they are delighted and appreciative of all of those who went out to support them. They did see increased sales. And and it's been hard for them, and they appreciate the support. And and for those of you can to frequent them, please continue to do so. Because, you know, this, it's it's still there. The aftermath is still there. Hey. Mr. The Par. Oh, bless you. What are you allergic to? You got flowers behind you. Got to move those flowers.
I hate to admit this, but if I start one, I have to do seven.
Mr. The Par, I had advocated for to have this table because I I I, you know, I've known you for a long time. I I know your I know your character, your thoughtfulness, your your person that does their due diligence. And I also know when we get a mass email, not that I would dismiss it, but also wanted there to be a conversation for my colleagues to to give you an opportunity to explain yourself. And and thank you, and sorry that you had to come on tonight to to do so. Mr. Devovy, I always appreciate your comments. I agree with a lot, a lot of what you said, a lot. But, you know, I don't want to go through everything that you mentioned, but I'm going to just say a couple of things real quick for the public's sake, because I feel like folks come here. There are snippets, there's things on social media. I was there when, and a vote for Rock Spring, when we we purchased the property. And 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 again, we have Mr. Pagliisi in the audience. At that time, county executive wasn't going to purchase it at the price we purchased it for. There was a developer coming in. There was reason why we, it was set at the price it was set at. We also said at that time that we knew we would have to develop a partial of the property. That's why we held off on the green acres funding. And how we got to that. And then again, the pandemic hit. And then all bets were off and and things changed, and things become complicated. Not excuses, but truths. I agree with you. On Northfield Avenue would be the the best option if we have to put something there. We actually had the golf architect go out to look at those two holes, seventeen and eighteen, to see what could be configured. And another complication arose with with the spring there. So, you know, it's it's not easy. So right now, nothing has been determined because we're still stuck there. But we have to do something, and we have to be thoughtful about it. And we, I agree with you also, and mentioned it to Mr. Gross, who's outside sneezing, so must be true. That, you know, maybe we need to look how we have our current situation with Kemper too, because the course is successful. Thirty-three thousand visitors a year, and and we need to rethink how we we do that. So again, not fixed yet, but hopefully to be fixed, but just a reminder of of the facts. Also, in regards to redevelopment. Also, in regards to redevelopment, I know we're gonna talk about a lot of things and you know, folks, I spent earlier, for those who missed it, I was in Boston last week at a downtown USA convention and spoke to multiple, so many people, it was just so exciting. But just to see what's going on, not just in other towns in the state of New Jersey, but across the nation. Redevelopment, redevelopment, redevelopment. What's blighted, what's not blighted, a lot of long conversations and we are not unique. And I tell folks over and over again, you know, South Orange, Livingston, Roseland, Verona, Quahog, well, they were not blighted properties. They were not blighted, they were obsolete properties. So we did nothing wrong with using the method of redevelopment to to get a new library, to have senior, a senior building that was done with a study to determine that we needed affordable housing for seniors. So again, I could talk for an hour and going home at three o'clock in the morning from the last meeting, I choose not to do so this evening. I'm more than welcome to to debate this with anyone who has the time and and the energy. But I have no problem going over my votes, why I voted. And I'm really disappointed, I know the Malangas have not been happy with Mr. Trank for years, forget this, you know. And 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 I never, I don't mind that. And I always admired when folks advocate, even those I don't agree with and and some of them are in this room this evening. But at the same token, to malign folks out there and to distort the facts and not to disclose yourself agreements with developers on your own accord and not to mention how you come to the council to buy property on a private road that you live on and disclose that as well, gets frustrating for me. And so again, there's things I'm limited limited to what I could say up here. But it just, I I feel bad because I I don't blame many of the public for advocating and things that they hear. But it really gets frustrating where we're at with this. And I'm just gonna keep it there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. This is just a reminder to those that are in the Zoom audience that public comment is closed. So the note that Mr. Fagan just brought me is that several people are continuing to raise their hands. But once we close public comment, please feel free to contact us, council@westorange.org. And all of our contact information is listed on the municipal website under the council. Councilwoman Governor Michael.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for coming out here, for your advocacy, both in person and via Zoom. Todd, Mr. Dubovy, excuse me, regarding Rock Spring. The facts that I understand it is that it was appraised at four million for a golf course, which is why the county executive offered six million. And when the private entity said no, he walked out and then it was purchased for twelve and a half million by West Orange. That's eight million more than it was appraised for a golf course. So I believe myself and two other council colleagues do not support any type of residential development on there. And personally, I think that we can keep it and do a really good job at maintaining it. If we, if Kemper assumes more responsibility, if we can get a triple net lease, put out an RFP for a vendor and where we can get some revenue from from the vendor based on, you know, whatever the percentage is. And I think that we should apply for green acres and get five or six million to help us with the debt. I don't support residential development, I said it before and and I'll say it again. I will reserve comments for Trank's resolution when we, Mr. Trank's resolution when we get there. Mr. Scott, regarding the zoning board, I agree with you, it's why I voted no. My understanding is that it's not to serve executive terms, so I'm I'm also confused. My understanding is that based on how we voted, that you'd have to step down and a new chair would be elected. Let's see. And then to Mr. Thapar, our, who used to be our public advocate. So first off, I'd like to apologize to you because when I voted, it was one-sided and the right thing to have done would have been to tabled it to hear your side. And I admit that my my fault, I am human, I'll make mistakes, so I want to say that I apologize to you. I should have heard your side. We should have given you the opportunity to speak. And because I voted on those four issues based on the pu- the public who did email us. And after speaking to you to find out, because I didn't do my due diligence, which I promised I would up here. I've stated that I would do my due diligence and do my research before I vote on things. And I didn't this time. And I promised to be fair and to be just, and I wasn't to you. So I sincerely apologize. With those four issues, the fact that, two, you weren't even here, I'm embarrassed and I'm appalled that I could vote no. And that's wrong. So I hope we find it in you to forgive me. And I would hope that later we can, under new matters, that we I can make a motion to reconsider. And I hope my call, my council colleagues will will reconsider and give you an opportunity as well. So thank you so much for speaking. Let's see. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rathbro.
Thank you, Council President. As always, Mr. Fagan, Mr. Pagliisi, we do appreciate your continued presence and timely information. Excited to hear Ms. Morelli out again, as always advocating for seniors, looking forward to a fantastic program tomorrow. We're gonna reserve any commentary on the rescission of the resolution for legal services until we get to that. Like my council colleague, I do not support residential development at Rock Spring. And I I think, you know, part of the challenge that we find ourselves in is, you know, it's a common theme, there's some position that either the council, the public takes with regard to the business of West Orange. And then regardless of that position, we just find a way to push things through anyway. So I'm disappointed that we're still talking about this residential development at Rock Spring. I I I think it has been made crystal clear to the administration that multiple council members do not support residential development there, do not think it's the right idea. And I think there is a better way to do it. And I also agree that we need to apply for green acres funding as soon as possible. And if we are serious about that, we can get in the queue for next year. With regard to the zoning board changes, I read the memo that was sent around. And when I inquired about that, I'm sure Mr. Kaiser can provide some additional detail. It is within the original resolution or ordinance regarding serving multiple terms as chair. The original rules and regulations regarding that apparently were fine at the time and stood for a number of years. And then we decided that we would vote to limit the ability for one person to serve multiple terms consecutively. And then that was determined to not be compliant, which is, I don't understand that, especially since when I spoke with the League of Municipalities. The guidance that I got from them was that if we were to, if we were to try to limit their tenure, we would be acting out of order. If we were trying to change when different board members were to serve, we would be acting out of order, but we are within our purview to limit the number of consecutive terms of a chairman. We're not changing how long that particular individual is appointed to that board, how long they can serve. And what we are doing is limiting the ability for them to serve consecutively as chair. And so, you know, I'm happy to hear the the feedback on that, but it is my understanding from the attorneys that I've spoken with that that is within our power. And that that's something that if the body had agreed to it, it should be honored. And the body did agree, so I'm disappointed to see that it's that at least a a a plan has not been presented that would address some of the public comment regarding that particular board as all as well as taking into account what this council has done. I'm happy to hear if now is appropriate for you to respond.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I, you're talking about, there was a an opinion issued by an attorney named Drill, if I recall correctly. Because I I briefly read that, I didn't read it very carefully and I wasn't aware it was going to be an issue tonight. I didn't realize the council had already received that. But he is one of the foremost attorneys with respect to municipal land use law in the state of New Jersey. He writes the book, so to speak, the Cox Book, what used to be the Cox Book, that's the Bible for the subject matter. I have always pointed out and taken a position that this body, the council, that the we don't, and the lawyers for the council for the township don't represent the zoning board or the planning board, they're independent autonomous agencies, they have their own lawyers. And from my perspective, this was really their issue more than it was ours, although conceded that in our ordinances, we had a provision regarding the length, you know, consecutive opportunities to serve in that position. My personal view was always, why not leave it up to the board? You know, what if this planning board is only board, it's up to them. They're the ones who are meeting, they're the ones who know each other, work with each other day in, day out, over the course of many years. Let them make that decision. Why are we making that decision? So again, I don't, I didn't read the Drill opinion or memorandum carefully. So I hesitate to comment on what was said by him, other than mention that, again, he is one of the foremost lawyers in the whole state of New Jersey regarding this. So if you, if there are people who disagree with him, that wouldn't surprise me because there's always going to be lawyers who disagree with each other. That's just a fact of life. And I mean, you know, the the notion that the town attorney lost that case is kind of silly. We, the township lost the case and and the Supreme Court actually changed the way it viewed or expressed the law. So it's not a matter of a lawyer losing a case. We, all lawyers lose cases, you try cases, and many trial lawyers will tell you, if you're not losing cases, you're not trying enough cases. Because every case, every contested matter has a winner and a loser, often multiple.
You're referring to the Supreme Court case?
Any case. I guess, I'm referring to, you raised the Supreme Court case.
No, 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 I'm talking about zoning board. The ability for the chair to serve consecutive terms.
Okay, I was expanding and based on another commenter from the public, that's all.
Okay. All right, so I mean, I think we need to be clear and we can certainly address this in in new business. You know, what happens now if we've already voted? That I would assume there would have to be some action from us, given a vote has already been taken.
Actually, no, I don't think so. If I read that opinion correctly, and again, I didn't read it as carefully as I wish I had now, the it, the indication was that the vote that was taken or the change in the law was ultra virus, meaning it's void ab initio. It's void from the time it happened. It had no force and effect, the fact that you voted to make that change. The law always was that there could be consecutive terms served. So it's a nullity, it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, that's that's where the the rub is, right? Because it's my understanding that the the ability to serve consecutive terms, if and and I don't want to beat a dead horse. My initial position on this was, when I spoke with folks at the zoning board, they had an election every year. The chair was the one that won that election. No one else wanted to step up. If that's their pleasure, God bless them, they have work to do, I'm not going to interfere. After hearing more voices, that's where my concern came in. And and it does appear to me, and and again, I wish, you know, I know that we, I'll I'll address the whole thing about the township council having their own attorney later. But I, you know, that opinion, I I can't even understand how that could undo our vote, even if that opinion works.
Well, this is, this is why, i- i- and it's because, and again, my recollection after reading it quickly, basically what Drill said was that our ordinances with respect to that issue were inconsistent with the municipal land use law. You can't do that. The municipal land use law is king, it rules, you can't differ from it. At least almost all the time, there may be a few instances where you can. I don't want to, again, make a rash, totally blanket statement, but and that's the reason why it's it's ultra virus, because it's contrary to state statute. You can't do that.
Yeah, and I, my my understanding was that it wasn't because we didn't affect the tenure of the individual that's actually serving, just in what capacity they serve. And that is the rub. And that's where I think it is less clear. So we may have some more work to do there. We're not going to solve that problem right now, but I do think there is some additional work to be done there to understand how that board should be moving forward, given the vote that we took as well as municipal land use law. Moving on, Mr. Thapar, I am disappointed in the tone in which you took in addressing the council tonight. Even if I were to concede your premise, which is either we knew and ignored the knowledge and did something in opposition to what we or did something, I guess punitive to you, or we didn't know and we were unprepared. I I I think that's setting up a false dichotomy. I I do believe our last council meeting started off with fireworks. We were bombed by multiple groups that had an agenda and set a very challenging tone. And I think that carried forward. Then we had quite a bit of work to do for that particular agenda. And so in all of that, perhaps we did not give the amount of care to your particular issue. I would have appreciated if you knew that that was, your issue was on for that meeting, that you would have been here. And if you were here then, we probably could have cleared things up at that time. So it's not just one or the other. Certainly, last council meeting was one of the most difficult that we've had. It may be the longest one that we've had, almost eight hours, at least in my tenure. And so I do think you should allow a little more grace. Most of this stuff I've already commented on. And so I'm gonna leave it at that. I've commented on Ms. Malanga's and Ms. Lefkowitz's public comment in the past. And I think we'll have another opportunity later on to discuss when we get to the rescission resolution. That's it for me, Council President, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi, Mr. Fagan, as always, Mrs. Morelli, thank you for enlightening us about the needs of seniors. I am so looking forward to working with you on the Elder Adults Board, and with you and Afeya Tweaton, to make that Toby Katz come alive and to bring the needs of our seniors to the forefront of our community. And thank you for your decades of advocacy.
Councilwoman, can you please just move the mic closer? Thank you.
There we go. To Todd Dubovy, I want to thank you for bringing up the Rock Spring. I too, like my colleagues, am not an advocate of any residential development on the course. The course is a historic piece of artwork. And I don't think it should be chopped up in any way, shape or form. I also am not a fan of a lot of residential development for many reasons that I've stated here so many times, whether it be the drain on our resources, our community resources, on our schools. And I really thank you for that. And I I, we will be rescinding the vote. And I will talk a little bit more about that when we get to it. Brent Draper Scott, thank you so much for bringing up the issues of the zoning board and using that language, subverting the law. Because I have been watching council now for a decade. I have watched the zoning board, I have watched the planning board. And I've been watching meetings and just too often, votes are taken, the council makes a decision, and then somehow it's being brought up again. The will of the council and of the people, in this case, is subverted. And the administration coerces some member of the council And the administration coerces some member of the council to take a different position. And I've watched this for years, and it's it's bothered me. So I really want to thank you for bringing that up and bringing it to light, and I hope that that practice stops. Because when the council makes a decision, it should be respected. Let's see. Mr. Safar. I want to let you know that I gave a great deal of thought to my decision. I am very in touch with all of the members of the community who are very active, who go to zoning board, go to planning board, come to council meetings. I have, in addition to the emails, it was not just the emails that made me make the decision. It was talking to many residents who had reached out to you and felt that your advocacy was not satisfactory. So I want to let you know that I took the decision very carefully. It was well researched, well thought out, and you know, I'm sorry you feel the way you do. Cindy Matu Brown, thank you so much for calling in and advocating for our special needs children and CPAC. I have worked with them for years in the schools. They're an incredible group of children and incredible group of families. And you're right, they are undervalued, and one of the things that I want to do on a council is bring them to the front of the line and start making sure that they are a part of more of the activities that we do in our township. I've talked to Camille about maybe OzPAC as a place where I know our seniors would like a seat and would like to be more involved in some of the productions that go on there. And I think it's also a place where our special needs children might enjoy being more part of a community, but they do need to be more integrated and have greater presence in our community. And thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Sally Malanga, thank you so much for bringing up this issue of the legal fees. I actually was planning on addressing it later when we talk about Mr. Trank. I have asked, and I know Councilwoman Rutherford has asked for legal fees by project, particularly for police, fire, some of the lawsuits that we've had for for many, many weeks now. We asked at the last meeting, and I've asked privately, and I really do think that we need to get that information to our council. It's it's important. As you see, everyone is concerned about it, including the public. Ms. Lefkowitz, thank you so much for calling in for all your advocacy on so many issues and for letting us all remember and making the public aware that your voice matters. It's so important. So many people have given up on our government and feel that they cannot make a difference. And your grassroots group, I know, is going to be a wonderful addition to our community and is going to be in the forefront of positive change. So thank you so much. And with that.
Thank you.
One follow.
Certainly.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, for the comment regarding the township council should have their own attorney. And again, Mr. Kaiser can provide additional context. But it's my understanding that the reason this council does not, and this is after speaking with attorneys about it, is because under our form of government, the township attorney is to represent the township council, provide advice to us as well. That is the role that that attorney or those attorneys are supposed to perform. Now, you know, we'll we'll get to the whole recession thing, and we can have some commentary at that point in time. But the reason we don't have our own, even though some other municipalities do, and they may be in contravention of the law, outside of having conflict attorney. The reason we don't is because that the township attorney is supposed to provide be responsive to us as a town council as well. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, that that's all I wanted, Council President.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Okay, time to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, March 21st, 2023.
Consent.
Excuse me. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, none. Resolutions, council president this evening. Resolution 12223 through 14123 should be pulled prior to the consent agenda being voted on as we have several ordinances on second and final reading that must be approved before these resolutions can be approved.
So can you please repeat the numbers that we?
There's 122 dash 23 through 141 dash 23.
Thank you.
And if there are any, yes, they're all to be pulled. And then if there are any other resolutions, the council would like to pull.
Yes, I personally would like to pull 117 dash 23.
Yeah.
Yeah. And are there any questions, council colleagues, regarding any of the other resolutions on the agenda this evening?
I'd like to pull 14423.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
And we can go back from those resolutions with the question that was pulled after we.
Yeah. For 11723, Madam Clerk, can you please take the presiding chair during this discussion? I am recusing.
Okay. This resolution is Resolution authorizing the license agreement, Montclair YMCA, for the use of the Ginny Dunkle pool.
So I was going to pull that as well.
Okay.
Reason being, I, you know, we've always supported that, which is great, but I just the the fee. I was, I know you're restructuring the fees. I just thought for the use of the pool, that was extremely low fee.
We can go back and.
Yeah.
Off them.
Yeah.
So if we approve it, though, don't we approve it at that fee?
Yes, no, if you if you don't approve it, then we'll go, and that's your your instruction up for us to go back. We will do that. I don't know what the impact of that is in terms of their their, you know, their organization. This is the time of year that we usually do this.
Yeah.
They serve, they serve the public as well as as, you know, as we do.
Yeah.
They certainly have an interest in that.
But the cost aren't our end to run the pool has increased, so I think it's, you know. I didn't get a chance to speak with Mr. Keo, so I didn't know if he you know, was okay with this or not okay with it. So which could we, should we table it or or just approve it and you could raise it or?
Don't approve it.
Okay.
You approve it, then it's approved.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
So you can either table it or vote it down, and then we'll bring it back.
So, Mr. Gross, would you look at other municipalities who rent their pools out to find out what the cost is?
We 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 can do that. And certainly, I I will ask Mr. Keo to do that as well. But the reality is that there's no, there's no market to compare this to. So, you know, it's usually you're you're trying to help another organization that's a that that is, you know, has the same problem, same money problems that that all the others organizations that serve the public have. So you usually have a a discussion about, you know, what back and forth, and that happens every year. Is to, you know, what 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 can you afford? And and, you know, the the whole idea is to get the services to people who don't have access to these. You know, that, you know, what these are, these are, you know, if you can afford private clubs, you go to that. But this is not, that's not what we are, and that's not what this this resolution is about. So this is a an agreement that the administration is good with. And while while we're always looking to raise more fees, the question is on whose back are you raising those fees? So that's 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 the issue that I see with this.
Do we know what the YMCA is charging participants that swim?
I'm sorry.
Do we know what they're charging per person?
I don't, but I can find that out.
Yeah. I assume they charge enough to make a profit.
I I don't know what their, I don't know what their program is, whether their program, they have members that that they, in the summertime, that this allows them to open it up to their members. And whether there's an additional charge for this and and, you know, what they're what they're they're acting on. I just, I don't know that, but we'll, like I said, we can find that out.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
So, yeah, let's table it and just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes, to table.
Okay. Councilwoman Gebre Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
The next resolution that was pulled is.
Oh, we should get Councilwoman back, right.
The next resolution was 144 dash 23, Resolution rescinding resolutions 80 dash 23, 112 dash 23, and 113 dash 23 regarding the township attorney's contracts. Councilwoman Scarpa, you pulled this.
Yes, I'm I'm pulling it because I've gotten so many calls from the public, and a lot of people are confused, and they've asked me to just clearly state, you know, what the issues are, what happened, and I do have a couple of questions as well. So for the public, I just want them to know the mayor's vote was cast and accepted by the municipal clerk based on erroneous device from the assistant township attorney. This erroneous device was based on a lack of legal knowledge of NJSA 4069A dash 41B. And it was a controversy over whether the mayor actually had the ability to break a tie. And what was learned was the mayor was not permitted, it was not legal for her to break a tie under the Faulkner Act, which is the legislation that prevailed. So the township attorney's firm did not receive the required majority vote of the council for adoption of the resolutions. And as a result, Resolution 8023, 112 dash 23 and 113 dash 23 were not approved or adopted by the council. I'd like clarification from legal on just a few issues. Is it true that Mr. Trank's contract expired on 12/31/22?
His previous contract did, yes.
Right. So if that's the case, is it true that the township attorney's position is currently vacant?
No. He was appointed in January by all of you. You appointed him to be the legal department head, the law department department head, along with a bunch of other department heads, so.
Okay.
Reappointed.
Okay. Also, as previously requested, I would like an accounting of all of the legal fees that or have been.
So, Madam Councilwoman, that's a different issue?
No, regarding the the.
I understand, but you're asking for legal. That's a different issue than this resolution, so I'm just going to ask you to either hold that till later under pending matters. That request was previously made and stated by you on the record during your comment, so we don't need to re- re- continue to restate.
And what?
That's Mr. Gross's issue, not mine. I don't.
Right, okay. So one other thing, in terms of the resolution itself, I'd like it to be a little bit more precise, and I'd like to change some of the language of it. I have a copy here that we could enter into the record. But the resolution, the first paragraph states, whereas the West Orange Township Council.
Can you give us a moment to get the resolution, because it sounds like you're making amendments to the resolution?
Yeah.
So we need to all be aware of what you're asking us to change.
Council President, if I may. Clerk, if if you would. I sent an edited version earlier today. I know it was late. What she is going to go through is substantially similar to that, so if maybe we could send that to or have that printed out, that we could read it?
Sure.
The edited version?
Let me just pull it up here.
Thank you.
I thought it was sent to everybody.
I don't know.
I don't think, I can't remember. I know I sent it to you, then I sent it to you, right?
Yeah.
I just can't remember if everybody was on it. Yeah, I don't think so. I think I just sent it to Susan. I was unclear about if that would violate Open Public Meeting Act, because it was specifically dealing with business.
No, so the Open Public Meetings Act is only in violation. You can email. We can all email to each other. We just cannot respond publicly to all.
Yeah, I didn't want to.
I understand, and and but what the Council President said is accurate. Basically, as you know, I often send the council something to everybody at once. And I say, please don't reply, because if you reply to me, and a bunch of you replied to me, that becomes basically an electronic meeting, and you can't have that. It's got to be open public meeting. You can't meet electronically. So I usually put in languages, please don't reply to me as a group. You want to call me, that's fine, but don't reply in an email, because then everybody is seeing all the replies. It's fair for me to give you what I want everybody to have at the same time. We just don't want to have a talk about it back and forth on.
Which is where the confusion was, because essentially this is come from the clerk. I'm sending it back with edits, and I didn't want to send it back.
Just start a fresh email. Just start a fresh email is is how you get around that. Just give me one moment, Mr. Kaiser. I'm sorry, I just want to address you because I see that your hand is raised. This is not the time for public comment, so I apologize, but we can't allow public comment at this time. Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There is no public comment, and we cannot allow you to speak at this time. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I just want to say, I have no way of printing this out. But I did send it to Councilwoman Gebre Michael, Councilwoman Castelino, Mr. Gross. Council President Williams was on it. Councilwoman Scarpa was on it. Mr. Kaiser and myself.
What time was it?
Quickly.
I may be able to save a little bit of time here. I don't know. I mean, at least I.
Please, please do. Thank you.
So, so first of all, I don't have any real problem with any of the changes that are proposed here. I don't think they're necessary. In fact, this resolution really isn't necessary, because the vote, because it was ultra virus, was a nullity to begin with. The problem is, as you know, when we have ABC meetings, we're often having to correct resolutions that were earlier adopted by mistake. The clerk's not aware of a special ruling being needed, so we renew somebody's license when in fact they needed that special ruling, so we have to rescind those resolutions to correct the record. So my thought was, and I mean, this was my mistake, and I, you know, have apologized for it, and I know why I made it, how I made it, and it makes me angry, but I was working too fast, and I didn't unfortunately go back and read the actual statute from beginning to end, which you should always do, frankly. But, you know, none of the, so this resolution is really to clean up the record and had a discussion with it with the clerk about it, and we thought it was a good idea to do this, whether it's necessary or not, which is why I drafted it the way I drafted it. With respect to one, the one council member was abstaining, and somebody crossed out stating her abstentions. The reason I use that word is because our rules, our council rules, provide that if you abstain by not saying anything, council is a positive vote. So I wanted to make clear that that was part of the record, that it was that Councilwoman Gebre Michael actually said, I'm abstaining. I thought that was kind of significant, so I wanted to include it. Is it necessary? No.
I I think your original language in that explanation is fine.
So and I I mean, the all the other changes, as I see it, are really a matter of of form, and I don't, I mean, I'm not married to my language. I don't, I there was, I have a the word must here circled.
Versus should?
Yeah, and the reason I said should is because I think because it is ultra virus and a nullity, it, you know. It should be rescinded to clean the record, but it doesn't have to be, because I don't think it's effective. So, but but I don't have a problem with making the change. And then on this last page. Again, it's just a matter of form, I think. I mean, the last resolved clause, if you want to add it, should probably say and be it further resolved, as opposed to just resolved. It's redundant, but I don't have. It's redundant, but I don't have a problem, I mean, I guess it provides some further explanation and. It it, to me, it's not really critical, so I don't have a problem if the council wants to do it.
Yeah, the the purpose of that, and I'm sorry for, but Susan, I kind of spoke about that, um, is just to make sure that future councils. Have additional context, should this ever come up again.
Well, on that, okay.
So can we make the amendments?
And there's a, there's an important addition, I think, too, in like the seventh, whereas. I'd really like to see added, um, to properly reflect. That based upon affirmative votes of two council members, the negative votes of two council members and one council member abstaining. The motions for adoption of resolution numbers eighty twenty-three, one twelve twenty-three and one thirteen twenty-three. Authorizing execution of various professional service agreements with the township attorney. And his law firm did not receive the required majority vote of the council for adoption. Of the resolutions and as a result, resolution numbers eighty twenty-three, one twelve twenty-three and one thirteen twenty-three. Were not approved or adopted by the council.
So can you make a recommendation for the actual wording that you want?
Yes, I have it.
Updated and or changed.
Excuse me, Council President, so here's where I have a problem tonight, because if we're gonna function as a body and. You know, if this was another resolution on another matter. Most of you here would would say, let's wait on this until we have it in front of us and. I don't have this in front of me, I try to read it on the screen right now. And it, I thought it was one or two edits, but you have a lot of paragraphs in there.
There's two paragraphs.
So then leave it, so I I agree then, but given that same, given that same rationale. If we're making that substantive over change, that's why I keep asking you, can you give us the wording or the words that you want to change? You got, I'm not finished, please, if I can continue speaking. I understand that, but you all have as a body continued to affirm that if you don't have changes. That are presented and circulated to any of our documents, any of our resolutions, any of our ordinances, anything in our packet. By Friday, that you refuse to vote on it when we have our council meeting on Tuesday. So I am going to ask that if you have substantial changes. That you send those to us, circulate them to us, and if it's necessary for us to table this so that we have an opportunity to review those. I'm asking for you to give us the same courtesy that you have stated and indicated that you refuse to do for this body.
And Council President, I'm really disappointed with how you're addressing this, this doesn't have to be.
I I brought it up, I I brought it up.
And you did so in a very professional diplomatic way. What was sub- what was submitted today via email directly to you as Council President?
At what time, sir?
One o'clock, whatever time it was.
No, it wasn't one o'clock, because I hadn't seen it, and even if it was, it was today, it was today. So I haven't had an opportunity to see it, that's all I'm saying.
A second ago, I interrupted you and you were very aggressive in in reprimanding.
I like your aggression, I like your aggression.
That was your aggression in reprimanding me for having interrupted you and then immediately following that. You do the same thing, please just follow the same rules.
Absolutely.
Thank you, so. The the edits that we sent today. If you want to table it, we can, I think that's fine, the issue is, he is, that vote failed. That is.
Yeah.
That was, uh, expressly and in detail. Sent to us by Mr. Kaiser saying that. What happened in that vote was not right, that vote is not valid, right? So, so there, there is no contract for the township attorney based on that vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so if we want to table it to get the language right, I'm fine.
I shouldn't say that correctly, because, because there there's an existing contract that just expired, so. But I I don't want to get into the law on what the effect of that vote is. Because that gets more involved and I don't see, I'm not gonna do that in an open public meeting. Um, but it doesn't mean that Mr. Trank's not the lawyer, not the town attorney right now, so.
Well, that's a question the public has been asking me to to ask, what happens next, are we looking at?
He has his existing contracts, does he not?
I see your hand.
Well, that's what people want to know, what what actually happens next and maybe you can.
Have to wait and see.
Wait and see.
Yeah, so, I don't, I mean, it's not my decision what happens next, so.
Well, we had a vote.
And I don't understand.
All this, all this resolution does is rescind what happened two weeks ago. That's what it's supposed to do, to clean the record.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
So I agree with these changes, why, why, I'd like to understand why we can't.
Well, I haven't seen the changes, so I'm I'm not informed.
You can, if you want to go to to.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take time at this meeting to expeditiously. Review changes that I have not had an opportunity to see.
We did this in the last.
We've done it.
Changes, we changed the words, we've changed the words.
Yeah, that's what this is, there's very.
You have paragraphs.
You have.
You have paragraphs.
It's one, one short paragraph and a few minor, you could see what's highlighted.
I moved to table, I moved to table, is there a second?
Not gonna second, I I.
I'll second it. Okay, hold on. Okay.
So we'll be voting on the.
Councilwoman Castellino to table?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Vote to table.
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
No.
Council President Williams?
No, I'm sorry, yes. The table.
So, so we.
Again, I started this conversation, I didn't mean it to, you know, to be like this, but. Again. This occurred. Because in the eleventh hour, Mr. Kaiser is, was tasked to. Reading during his very busy workday, so again, so. My example that I was trying to start this conversation is now. Rushing, I know with the public's out there, there's big conspiracies, just so great to have all these kinds of theories out there. The mistakes we make in government, from what I've seen in my experience, it's two thousand fifteen since I've been here. Is we're doing a lot and when it gets rushed. And that mistake was made erroneously or however you want to. Phrase it, which I felt, I feel reading this truthfully, I feel like the adjectives and the language are, again, we don't, we we know it was a mistake. We, we're, you know, and I give, I commend Mr. Kaiser for really, you know. Putting himself out there, but again, he was tasked with this in the eleventh hour. And mistakes happen when we know all of us are capable of making mistakes in the eleventh hour. And, um. I don't want to make another mistake by not be able to be thorough with this, just like all of you, and we've done this. Multiple times with the cannabis ordinance. We get in the eleventh hour and we we need to table it, so. That's my whole reasoning for this, not to, you know. Make any kind of statements, but again, if we're gonna move forward, let's move forward and take our time. With with these items, thank you, Council President. You're welcome.
Council President, if I may. Um, I, I think it's important to say this on the record, Mr. Uh, Kaiser, obviously. Every human makes mistakes, that is, I don't have, I don't take any issue with that at all, I do appreciate, um. How you have apologized profusely.
I shouldn't have made this one, that's for sure.
You know, that's how it is, right? Um, certainly when you're in the public, mistakes get the the mic, uh, the, um. Microscope put on them, um, so I'm I'm willing to concede that and I don't have an issue with that. I'm happy to, well, I'm willing to vote on the, uh. Resolution as is. Um, and the intention behind the language that was added was just to provide context, now. I think. When we say, when we take this adversarial posture with each other, and some of us have had some conversations about this. Over the course of this year, actually coming into this year. Uh, had conversations as well, think when we take an adversarial posture with each other and don't provide the. Basic courtesy to each other, while we are here, we do a disservice to this council. As well as the public, uh, and Council President, I would, um. Very much like. If, when. You are correcting me in particular, I'm not speaking for anyone else. When you are seeking to interrupt me, that you would treat me with the same level of care you would want me to treat you. Uh, and I think if we just do that basic thing. I think this council will. Uh, be a lot more effective and I think the public will have more trust in us, so now, having said that. We can take those changes out, if that's what you choose, we can vote on this. Uh, as it is, I mean, there are some strikeouts there, you can choose to keep or take whatever away, the point is. That it is rescinded, uh, and I think that's a very important step for us to take, which is why I'm willing to do so tonight, thank you.
Thank you, um, Madam Clerk, the vote? Go ahead.
So what happens now with the, um, labor and litigation contract? Is that null and void, that's separate from Mr. Trank's contract, right, resolutions?
All, all three resolutions are being rescinded by this resolution.
I understand, and by that happening, does that mean? The labor and litigation council professional services contracts are now null and void for this year, what happens with that? No?
I'm not following what you mean. I mean, the, there were three resolutions dealing with three contracts, all involving Mr. Trank or Mr. Trank's firm.
Correct.
They, they failed to pass. Based on. Because the mayor wasn't legally able.
I understand.
So I'm not.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is.
Existing contract.
Existing contract hat, doesn't that expire for the?
They stay in place.
Mr. Trank essentially.
I'm not talking about his council, I'm talking about the other resolutions for labor and litigation. For his firm.
He doesn't have any of it.
Yes, there are.
There are three, three, her, her question, as I understand it, is. We were taking a vote on a contract that would obligate us contractually with that firm. For them to provide some services in return for some compensation from us, that failed, so now what?
We have other labor council, uh, that we approve.
That's what I'm asking, it's because they said that Mr. Trank will continue to be the council, correct? So my question is, what happens with his. Firm receiving the professional services contract? Are they no longer?
Able to do it at work?
I think I already said, that's not the case, I believe that Mr. Trank was appointed to be the town attorney, he is.
He was correct to be the town attorney, but what about?
It's also included in that contract, not as labor council or litigation council specifically.
But that's what I'm asking, because in those two resolutions, one was specifically for. Labor council and the other one is specific for a litigation council.
Right.
So now if we all vote to rescind this.
Mr. Trank, Mr. Trank's contract going back for twenty-five years has always included litigation. Um. At the same rate that the attorney billing guidelines provide for. Um, that's been in existence for as long as I've been here, as far as I can recall, it's a long time, but I think my memory is pretty good about that. Um, he has never before that I know of had a labor. And employment law contracts, no, no contract specific to that, but as a town attorney, of course, he has responsibility. Overall for labor and employment matters, but more often than not, we have hired lawyers who specialize in that. Um, and I think the reason behind, well, Mr. Gross can, you know, went into the reasons at the last meeting, but, um. But it doesn't mean he stops working, so.
But I think.
Okay.
I'm not talking about his specific contract to be the township attorney.
Good.
What I'm referencing, and I wish I had the numbers in front of me, um.
They're in the resolution.
And I'm looking for it, just.
One twelve twenty-three.
So, yeah, so for one twelve and one thirteen, for those specific professional services contracts are for his firm, not for him. Right?
Right.
For council, for a labor council and for one is for litigation.
Correct.
It's not for him, it's for attorneys within that firm, so my question to you is. If it passes and it's rescinded. What happens now with those two professional services contracts, do we have to go back? In two weeks and vote for them or are they null and void now? And we use other labor and litigation council?
Well, as you know, we have many labor council and many litigation council.
Correct.
Mr. Trank's firm has always done litigation work as part of the town attorney contract, he has associates, he has partners. The way law firms work, work gets partial data among different people because nobody can do it all.
Correct.
Um, so that's gonna continue under his prior contract, which as far as I can see, continues. Based on. The law, but and that's something I don't want to, you know, venture out into detail on because I think it deserves some research and I don't know what's gonna happen going forward. So we have to, that's gonna have to get figured out, but, but. His firm now does not have a separate litigation contract or a separate labor and employment contract.
Which is what I've been asking, that's basically what I've been trying to say.
Yeah, if if I can address a little bit, um. We. The administration decided as a matter of clarity and transparency. To actually put the others in there because we were having, we we did have. These other, um, contracts for to labor council, we looked at it, we said, you know. Frank, Mr. Trank's firm is going to be doing more and more of that because he has different, when his new firm has specialties. Uh, it doesn't mean that he couldn't do the work before he did. Um, if if necessary, because ultimately if it's. Gets to that level, there's either potential litigation or it's litigation, so it it falls in it, so now. We we put those contracts on for clarity purposes, not because we needed them. Um, we were trying to be, you know.
So are you saying by us now voting that his firm won't be used for labor and council, just?
Mr. Trank will continue to be.
He will, but not attorney.
And his firm will be continued to un- until such time is, as according to legal, um. There is a replacement.
Now, I'd like to ask another question. Do you think that it's a conflict of interest with him as the township attorney? Having his firm. Get professional services contracts from us, because there are several labor. Council, there are several litigation council as we voted on in the last meeting, so how does he? How how does he decide that his firm gets the role versus the other laborer? Labor council or the other litigation council, um, that we have. That we use in town.
According to. Our ordinances, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this can, print our ordinances. The law director makes a determination of which councils to use in which situations.
I understand that, but do you, don't you think that's a a conflict of interest for him to select his firm? To get.
If if it is every of the five hundred and sixty-six municipalities, five hundred and sixty-five now. Five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in state in New Jersey, I'd go out on a limb and say that they probably all have. Uh, town attorneys, I know they all have town attorneys and most of them have their own firms. And they're referring work to their own firms, absolutely, right, it's not a conflict.
Any more questions?
Yes, so, um, the intention from me, and I was. Prepared to wait until those professional services contracts resurfaced, but the con- the conversation is now moving in that direction. The intention for me with that particular vote was to express. Uh, my lack of confidence in Mr. Trink for reasons that I enumerated at the time. Um. Chief among them is that he's not responsive to town council. Uh. For things that he doesn't want to be responsive for, and the the example that has been brought out tonight is legal fees. Um. And we are, given our form of government, we are precluded from having our own council. So in taking that vote and voting no. I was stating to the administration formally with my vote. That I think this is not the right person for this job, and what I'm hearing from you is, no matter what we vote. He's gonna have that job.
You know, I believe that there's law on this and I would like to look at it before I make any final judgments about it. Um. But. I, you know, he's been, again, been doing this job for twenty-five years now. Um, I believe he does it for some other towns and other public entities, he represents some of them, um. Remember that it's the mayor's appointment, um, I gave you. I've given you now numerous times, not just you, everybody on this council, um. The, uh. Newark versus Jane, or the James versus Newark or Newark versus James, I can never remember the full name of the case. Um, which addresses not this issue specifically, but it kind of hints at it. There's other case law and I don't want to make.
There's other case law and I don't want to make statements about that now. I'd like to, you know, do some more work on it and maybe somebody else will do some work on it. I don't know, but.
And I respect you wanting to do your work on it. Here's my issue, because we have asked in the last meeting, even meetings before that, we have all specifically asked for how much we spent in legal fees for the fire and police litigation. And we have yet to receive that.
So for the record, that comes from Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross would produce that information, so I I want us to be clear on what we are.
I know. Hold on, but there is more.
Okay.
In addition, we have asked if we could drop this litigation with the fire and police and we were told that this wouldn't happen. It's just it's more fees unnecessary and, you know, we're still in litigation.
Okay, a couple of things.
You know?
First of all, let's remember that litigation strategy is something that gets discussed in executive session, not in open public meetings because you affect negotiations, you affect settlement terms, you affect all kinds of things. There's a reason for the rule.
Intent. I just.
I I understand that and I'm not. Councilwoman.
In the last twenty years and just to see what the numbers are and we haven't received anything.
You're on the bill list.
Again, I I'm not being critical. But I really think that those numbers, the financial stuff needs to come from Mr. Gross. And um he's said a number of times he'll get it. Um, I know he was away last week, but I I assume he can get it reasonably quickly and I assume it will be more accurate and.
Litigation fees over two months.
If I, if I can, if I can.
All due respect.
If I can remind the council that the question that was asked has been asked is whether or not we can, whether we can provide a breakdown of legal fees by category and by case. And with that point in time, I reported to you that, no, we cannot, we do not. We do not do our accounting on that basis. So it's not something that we can just go and provide. So it can be done and we're in the process of of trying to put it all together. It is a monumental task.
But I I understand that, but I specifically asked just for the numbers. I didn't ask for, maybe my other council colleagues asked for a breakdown. I didn't. I just wanted to know how much we spent in litigation on the fire and police so far. And then, and then how much that we've spent in total council fees since twenty twenty and then over the last twenty years. I just want a ballpark figure because I felt that we're spending so much in attorney fees and it might make sense from a a administration perspective to possibly hire a couple of in-house attorneys at a salaried rate versus having all of these professional services contracts at an hourly rate. And remember, I said that the these resolutions are so vague. It just says this firm with attorneys plural, it doesn't dictate how many attorneys from the firm at an hourly rate. So I, for me, in specific, I just wanted the numbers. I didn't need a detailed breakdown. Those are some of my other council colleagues.
Well, Councilman, you, even in what you just said, there was breakdowns that you were asking for the police and fire contracts and things. So we don't keep our records in that manner. We keep our records by 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 vendor and by and by date, but we don't keep that. We're we're going back to the individual attorneys offices and asking them to provide us a history broken down by case. That's the way we can get that. That's going to take a lot.
I think that's.
In terms of, in terms of looking at our bu- the budgetary impact of it um on on our website, and you know, I'll certainly send you the links. You can go, all of our, all of our budgets and the legal fees are for the past uh blah 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 fourteen years. And in addition to that, while you, Mr. Gross, may not track legal fees by category or case, the law firms do. So Mr. Mr. Trank could have provided that. I wasn't clear enough when I just said before that we've gone back to the law firms and asked them to provide that breakdown.
It's it's one of the reasons why I asked when we were going through the professional services contracts that we place a cap or not to exceed. So we have an idea of how much is being spent. So if we we exceed that cap, come back and extend it.
Just like with any of the change orders that we have. If we, I thought we clarified at the last meeting when that request was made, that if any of the budgeted amounts are exceeded, that they have to come back to us and ask. And we have made it very clear that if any budgetary line item is exceeded, then we expect to have.
If there's no not to exceed. If it's open-ended, there's no way to exceed it. And and I'm just going to take exception with this, Mr. Gross, and and I'm 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 sure um you have much more on your plate than time to do it. And I'm, I I concede that fully, so I get it. However, it it is not um a a heavy lift for any law firm to produce their fees. And this is not new to this council. Uh, this was an issue last year. It was an issue the year before. And so after so much time with not receiving fees in a way that we've asked for them, it is, I can't understand how that's not a red flag. That is a absolutely a red flag for me. If if this town council or any town council asks for fees from any of their professionals for an extended period of time and do not get them from that professional, that's a red flag. There's no reason to not be responsive to us in that regard. And that gets back to the heart of the matter, Mr. Kaiser. You know, what we're, what we're dealing with here in in this rescission and what the vote we took last week, what we're dealing with here is a town council, or at least a town councilman, I won't speak for my colleagues, that has made requests, that has expressed his his intention, and it has not been honored. Wait, one one more thing, and I understand the caution that we've been given about speaking about litigation in these meetings, and I understand that. However, if we continue to express a position and that position is ignored, you leave us very little choi- choice but to escalate and bring it in public, right? Because if we make a, if we, if prior councils and this council have, and we're not united on much, uh, five to zero, I mean, the basics of running government, yes, but most of the hot button issues have one or two people that that don't agree. We've been unanimous now for three years in a position that we've asked our town attorney to take. And he has decided to do something different. That is a challenge for me. That, and and then you add the fees on top of it, it's even worse. Okay, uh, just.
Can I, can I, can I jump in, Mr. Kaiser?
Okay.
Okay, because I don't want. Councilman, and you and I had offline discussion last week after two thirty AM meeting, so you're at a wit's end. Mister, I don't know why Mr. Trank has become the scapegoat of the police and fire contracts. Um, at the end of the day, I've been working with attorneys since two thousand and six when I was on the school board. And I, and and Mr. Trank hasn't done anything different from all those attorneys I work with them to now is he gives us a legal advice. The mayor has the final say of what happens with the police and the fire contracts. It's the mayor. He could advise, I've seen Mr. Trank advise my colleagues in this body, not all of you here, but prior colleagues. And in closed session, and sure enough, soon as we get out to the public, things, things are said that they took advisement on. So again, the attorneys advise. It's up to, it's up to the mayor for those certain decisions. So.
Well, to that point, Councilwoman.
To that point, so so he, so the attorney, whether it's him or it's it's Mr. Kaiser, because we've had conversations. He's advised me in the past. Sometimes I don't take his advice, sometimes you do. So again, it it's up to the person. They could only do what they do. That's any attorney we deal with. Also, you have a bill list. You could easily look at the bill list and you could look at those bills in real time, monthly of how much is getting spent. And when you see an exorbitant amount, you could ask a question at that time. So if your concerns are there, state them. And you also have the breakdown of of the fees the past year or two because one of the union uh leaders sent it to all of us. So you have that breakdown. So if you missed that email, it's sitting probably in your emails.
No, we've seen that and.
And again, and again.
The issues that union president sent to him, not the attorney.
You you're right, but the attorney, di- did you get the information for the attorney for them to do it? So again, information has to get to all of us when we ask for it within a reasonable matter. They had asked for a while ago, it should get there because otherwise the conspiracy theory is wrong.
Before I forget, I'm I'm getting old, so. I mean, um, all this is really good stuff for budgetary conversations. And I I I assume that when you get together to talk on a budget, this is going to be a big issue. Um, the other thing I will point out in fairness to Mr. Trank is he has worked for several different law firms over the course of the last several years. McManus in Scotland, you know, the latest, I mean, there's been a bunch of changes that have happened over the course of several years, which I think as a lawyer myself makes it harder to put all the numbers together quickly. Um, I understand what you're saying. It should be easy. I'm not sure that it always is as easy as any of us would like. So just wanted to, and I, that would be acceptable if I gotten a request that I made in two thousand twenty one for legal fees by two thousand twenty three. So that, that that is just too much time. But to your point, uh, Councilwoman Castellino about the attorneys doing what the mayor uh decides. Um, our current mayor last year made her position on one of these matters, I'm trying to be respectful of Mr. Kaiser, on one of these matters very clear. And she was a part of that unanimous council prior to these two new council members joining us. She was a part of that unanimous council that expressed her position when she was a councilperson on that particular issue. And I'm talking about police and fire. And I'm not talking about the contracts. I'm talking about the litigation. And then during her campaign to become mayor, she stated her position on that. And when she became mayor, she stated her position on that.
Who do you think initiated and and again, I'm not.
What I'm saying, Mr.
But again.
I think, I think, I think the 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 posture that Mr. Trink has taken with regard to being responsive to requests or um expressed uh guidance from this council has not been acceptable to me, and that's the issue.
And that's fair, but.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to.
So are we going to move this or are we going to vote on it as is?
We're going to, based on the prior's prior conversations, um, I move that we rescind and move forward for the acceptance of one forty four twenty three. As is. With the, no, I haven't seen anything.
They want amended.
I just made.
She just made the motion. To accept. Is there a second? Except that is, yeah.
Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Castellino.
For to vote as is.
To vote as is.
For it or against it.
This is for the amendment.
No. Vote. The way it was presented to you in your packet. Well, I I would table it, but yeah. We already did a vote to table. It was three to two and it failed.
Failed, okay.
Right. Uh, so now, uh, to rescind it, uh, yes, I'm not voting for the ordinance anyways. Yes.
Okay. So it's a yes. Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And now we will move to our ordinances on second and final reading.
Uh, Council President, if I may interrupt, uh, I just want to point out for the record that we had lost our Zoom signal for about two to three minutes during the previous discussion. Uh, I, because this is a RDP login, uh, I believe it was recorded. I don't know. I subsequently signed back into Zoom. I resolved the issue. And it shows that we have fifty six attendees. Uh, however, the list is not populating. So I I really don't know if they're there. I believe that they are because we've had this problem in the past. And I just wanted to point it out for our Zoom audience at home that uh some problem with Zoom, we're off. I believe I resolved the issue, so we should just continue as normal. Uh, in the past, when we had this, we have public comment coming up for those uh second and final reading ordinances. If anybody raises their hand when we've had this problem in the past, that their hand appeared and I was able to call on them. So I just wanted to point out for the record that there's, there was an issue that I believe was resolved.
Thank you. And as we have stated in the past, we are trying to uh accom- accommodate our residents by doing a hybrid type meeting and technology does not always work appropriately and or properly. So in the event that there is anyone who is not able to dial back in, please be mindful that the meetings are recorded and they should be up on our website within forty eight hours. And they will also be on channel TV thirty five and forty six for your viewing pleasure. Apologies to the public again. Thank you. And Madam Clerk.
Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty seven seventeen dash twenty three. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two of the revised ordinances of West Orange Administration. Article six, Department Established, Section seven point one. Departments, Boards and Commissions, adding subsection A nine, Department of Engineering, deleting section seven point one B and amending sup- and supplementing sections ten point one, Director of Public Works duties of Department to alter the requirements for the Director of Public Works and the responsibilities of the department, deleting section ten point two, Division of Engineering, and creating a new and separate Department of Engineering and newly added section eighteen point two.
Is there anyone from the public?
Okay. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael. This is to introduce on second and final. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Now, is there anyone from the public who would like to have comment on twenty seven seventeen?
Council President, I see no hands raised and I've also been informed that our Zoom signal, although it was lost on the computer, was not lost on the uh on the signal out, so.
Oh, excellent.
So we're solid.
Thank you. Thank you. Good news. My colleagues have any commentary on twenty seven seventeen dash twenty three?
Is there a motion to approve? Okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven eighteen dash twenty three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty five, sections twenty four point seven F and twenty four point seven G of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange filming fees.
Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty seven eighteen dash twenty three?
Uh, Sean Gaynor, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting. Sean, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Your microphone is muted, Sean Gaynor. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Moving on. Is there anyone else who would like to have public comment? Thank you.
Seeing none.
Okay, uh, any, any commentary from the council?
No, I'm going to make it when it's during the resolution.
Okay. Okay, um, is there a motion to approve twenty seven eighteen dash twenty? Okay, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Ordinance twenty seven nineteen dash twenty three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section twenty seven point six of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange.
Is there a motion to?
Second.
Introduce on second and final. Okay, hold on. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty seven?
Nineteen.
Nineteen dash twenty three.
To me, Council President.
Thank you, colleagues. Any comments?
Is there a motion to approve twenty seven nineteen?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, thank you. The motion passes twenty seven twenty dash twenty three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section fifty six of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange escrow schedule.
Their motion.
Second.
We're not going home at three tonight.
I guess, yeah. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty-seven twenty dash twenty-three?
Seeing none, Council President. Oh, I'm sorry. I spoke too soon.
Yes, please.
Uh, no, they, they lowered their hand.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty dash twenty-three?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Motion carries. Twenty-seven twenty-one dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section fifty-five point one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange escrow schedule.
So.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-one dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty-one dash twenty-three?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. Twenty-seven twenty-two dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section twenty-seven point one, one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange violations and penalties.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
To introduce, actually. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-two dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion carries. Twenty-seven dash twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-seven twenty-three dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section forty point two D of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange certificate of occupancy permits.
Some move.
Second.
All right. Can I just say? Is there a motion to introduce, just so we have it on the record?
Sure.
I can't write that fast either. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-three dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty-three twenty-three?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like?
No, that was.
Oh, I did that already? Oh, shoot. Okay. Twenty-seven twenty-four dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section twelve point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange supplemental parking and loading space regulations.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-four dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty-four?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes.
Okay.
That motion passes. Twenty-seven twenty-five dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section eleven twelve of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange outdoor seasonal sales.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. There anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-five dash twenty-three?
Sean Gaynor, welcome to the meeting. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Sean Gaynor, seventy-four Reynolds Avenue, Whippi, New Jersey. Um, yeah, I just, uh, sound on this. I'm sorry. We had some technical difficulties there. Um, I think I'd rather come to the council meeting in person now that I'm a retired firefighter that was unvaccinated and was mistreated by the administration.
Mr. Gaynor, are your comments regarding the ordinance that we're actually listening to public comment on, which is?
Like, like. No, I'm sorry. You stated yourself that there's, you know, technology difficulties, so.
Yes, I understand that, but right now, the only opportunity to speak is regarding this particular ordinance. So if your comments are not germane.
No, 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 yeah.
Unfortunately, this is not the appropriate time.
I'm fine with that. I'll, I'll be at a council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your participation. Are there any other comments, Mr. Fair?
About others.
Colleagues. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty-five dash twenty-three?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Um, twenty-seven twenty-six dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, point twenty-four, point two B, two J, six of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange conditional uses.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Gabor Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-six dash twenty-three?
Seeing none, Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty? Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-seven twenty-seven dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section sixteen point eighteen of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange security enclosures.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven twenty-seven dash twenty-three?
Seeing none, Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. Twenty-seven twenty-eight dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section fifteen point five of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange permits.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes.
No, that was for to.
To.
To introduce.
Yes.
I'm sorry. And is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty-seven twenty-eight dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second. Yeah, so move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes.
Good news, we're halfway there.
Yeah, the, the motion passed.
Stay away.
Ten more to go.
Twenty-seven twenty-nine dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section fifteen point three C, one C seven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange allowed signage sidewalk signs.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding twenty-seven twenty-nine dash twenty-three?
Uh, same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven twenty-nine?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-seven thirty dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter fourteen, section twenty point four and twenty point seven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange. Penalties for failure to report and penalties for failure to maintain property.
Is there a motion to introduce twenty-seven thirty?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty-seven thirty dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven thirty?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman, hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, Castellino, Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-seven thirty-one dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter fourteen, section nineteen point seven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange bonds.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven thirty-one dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven thirty-one?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-seven thirty-two dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter one, section five point one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange maximum penalty.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-seven thirty-two dash twenty-three?
Same on Council President.
Colleagues.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven thirty-two?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-seven thirty-three dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter fourteen, section seventeen point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange compliance with order and reinspection.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael, Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone for public comment regarding ordinance twenty seven thirty two dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, and just for the record, clarifying that I said twenty seven thirty three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty four dash twenty three in ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section eleven point eleven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, outdoor sales.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty seven thirty four dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve twenty seven thirty four?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
This is twenty seven thirty four?
It is.
Okay, yes. My answer, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty five dash twenty three in ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section eleven point ten of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, outdoor cafes in the B one, B two, and PC districts.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty seven thirty five dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve? Twenty seven thirty five?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty six dash twenty three in ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section nine eleven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, portable storage containers.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty seven thirty six dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve twenty seven thirty six?
Some.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty seven dash twenty three in ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section eight point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, walls and fences.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty seven thirty seven dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve twenty seven thirty seven?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty eight dash twenty three, ordinance of the township of West Orange in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, the township providing for a special emergency appropriation in an amount not to exceed two point five million dollars to fund the preparation and execution of a complete program of revaluation of real property in the township.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty seven thirty eight dash twenty three?
Phil Litwinoff, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Litwinoff. I live at eleven Linden Avenue here in West Orange.
And your comments, Mr. Litwinoff?
I have a question. Of this two point five million dollars that the county wants to raise to do this reevaluation, how much will West Orange get stuck with it?
I'm sorry, the county to do? So this is the township that is requesting the two point five million dollars as we are required um, to do a tax evaluation typically on a ten year um, basis. Sometimes it doesn't always happen within ten years. Um, but this is an obligation of the township of West Orange, not the county of Essex.
Well, how much is it going to cost the township?
Well, we're appropriating two point five million dollars to do the assessment.
Okay, may I ask another question? Mr. Gross, you're the CFO and you've been so for, as you said, many, many years. What did it cost the township the last time we went through a tax reevaluation?
It's approximately a million and a half.
I'm sorry?
Approximately one and a half million.
So why will it cost almost twice?
So this is, this is fifteen years ago uh, or more, two thousand, probably two thousand eight when it was time. So it's sort of fifteen, fifteen years. Um, you have, you have an increased cost in terms of just time moving on. Uh, we're also part of this now is is one of the reasons that we, we want to get done here is um, to make sure that we get a fair valuation for all of our residents. So we want to be able to give the inspectors as much information of our information as possible. So we're, we're looking at um, providing digital information to them, whereas in the past, that's never been the case uh, in terms of the documentation. They've not been in the field being able to look at the information we have on an individual property. So part of this process is, you know, we, we hire this company uh, to basically uh, send people to every single home in the township. So that's for fifteen thousand homes to be inspected. Uh, and they don't just do a drive by, they actually have to go in those homes and look and see what, uh, what improvements there are to, in order to properly value uh, property. Um, part of that uh, process includes knowing um, what the, what the current conditions of the property are and what the history of the property is. So this is all the things that go into this mix that, that a lot of it is, is uh, wasn't available to us uh, fifteen years ago, technology wise. Today it is, and there's just, there's a cost that comes along with all that.
Mr. Litwinoff.
And again, the real important part of this is making sure that we get it right. Uh, that, that we don't have uh, a disparity in, in, in the, the assessments. And because that will cost us multiples of two and a half million dollars down the road.
The tax.
If, if we don't get it right, because what happens then is we get a lot of appeals and then we lose those taxes because we have to, we have to refund them, not just ours, our portion, but the county's portion and the Board of Ed portion. So it ends up, it's, it's really, really important um, that we, we, we do this right and, and spend what's necessary in order to get it right.
Mr. Litwinoff, do you have any additional questions?
Only that I would suggest that, that increase, even though we're fifteen years, is still an awful high number. I've gone through three assessments in this township over the years I've been here. And I've seen what's happened on it. So I leave it to your hands.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Uh, there any further comments from the public regarding twenty seven thirty eight dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues.
Uh, just uh, for clarification, Mr. Kaiser, what is the statute regarding how often we have to reevaluate? I know there was some commentary around it. I just can't remember exactly what it was.
I think it's supposed to be ten years, but that's almost never done, but at least in Essex.
It's actually, it's actually not on a timeframe.
Oh, okay.
By statute, it is, it is practice to do it at least every ten years. Um, and the, the statutory limits are really, it's what is your percentage of value compared to your assessment?
Assessment.
So as you're set, if you're, if you're, you, you fall below eighty five percent of true value when your assessment is overall, then the pressure, you know, the county, um, will um, uh, monitor, you know, uh, what, what goes on in the individual towns. And in our case, you know, we, we ended up in litigation with the county and we are, you know, we, we were spoke, they, they wanted us to have this done uh, a year ago and through the litigation, we ended up settling on twenty twenty five. Uh, so that's um, that's where we are. That's what this is. So this, this is not, this is not optional. This is mandatory at this point in time.
That, that was the second question. What happens if we were to uh, vote it down? I'm not going to. I don't think we are, but in the event that that were to happen and we said, you know what, we don't want to do a revaluation.
I think the county tax, county tax board would sue us.
Well, it, it, actually we've already been sued. We, we're, we're in our court order. We, we, we have a, an agreed, there is a, there is a um, uh, an order already in place uh, today. I don't, I won't talk about what towns was, but the county met today and they were very pleased with our progress. Uh, and we got left off the list that they were going to send to the attorney general to report who was not in compliance with, with the statutes and with their, the court orders.
Yeah.
So forthwith, we would uh, most likely end up getting, being ordered, you would be ordered to do this and by, by someone in a, in a robe. And the, and if the council chose not, still not to do it, that there would be repercussions.
Right. And I just wanted for the public to know, you know, this is something that we have to do and none of us want to. We all live here. But we don't have a choice.
I can see now, I see. I think this is where the, the, that's a mistaken idea. I can see why I wouldn't want to do, because in terms of the administration of this is, is a nightmare. But having said that, the reality is, we, we do have, and, and, and politically, you might not want to do it because of the, the disruption that it causes. But the reality is, what's happened over time is the individual property owners are paying a disproportionate amount of property taxes. People, those properties that have gone up more in value are paying less proportionate to peoples who, who, who values didn't go up as much. So this realignment is really a true fairness issue.
So that was meant to be funny, but on a serious note, uh, you know, many of us are like, we're concerned that once this new tax bill comes in, as it did for me the last time in the revaluation, my taxes went up significantly. And that's why I say, you know, but we have a job to do and we're going to do it. I'm happy to.
It's important to keep in mind, and these statistics that I'm about to give you, much across the board and almost every municipality experience. One third of the people go up.
Right.
One third of the people go down.
Stays.
And nobody talks about that.
Right.
Because then their taxes go down there. I'm not talking about that at all.
No.
And then, and the other third stays.
Yeah.
So it is, it is, it is truly a realignment. It is a fairness issue, you know, because as a matter of our rights, um, we, we, we have a right individually to pay taxes proportionate amount to the system that we, we live in.
Got it.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I was going to save it for the, when we did the resolutions to ask the questions. Um, but obviously we're going to get, when the time comes, the, the contracts. So we'll know exact, because I'm a little concerned and I'll talk to you this offline. Like you're asking the history of the prop, like, are you going to have people give you documents or I, I don't assume where you're going with that?
Documents, documents, documents we have already that our inspectors historically have never had access to.
Okay.
So we want.
But you already have them digitally or?
Well, thus part of this process will be, will be to get a lot more documents digitized.
Okay.
And, and, and there's a side benefit for that for us moving forward.
I could just, I just don't see logistics of getting, well, documents from the resident.
Oh, no, no, never, never, never do that. No, no, no.
It's all the documents that we have. But when somebody's working in the field fifteen years ago, you can, they could never look.
Got it.
Tablet didn't hardly existed. You know, the, the information wasn't prepared for them to look up.
Yep, tax match and everything. Okay. Very good. All right. I'll think about it. Let me see how it goes.
Thank you. All right.
And, and I'm sorry, and yes, you will see the content. We, we, we're, we're out to bid for um, the, the, uh, the contracts now. And you'll, you will see them and get.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Which cannot happen for another twenty five days. So.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve twenty seven thirty eight dash?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty seven thirty nine dash twenty three in ordinance adding chapter five, article eight, section thirty five point one through thirty five point two four to the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, public event permits.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on twenty seven thirty nine dash twenty three?
Same on council president.
Colleagues. Is there a motion to approve twenty seven thirty nine?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa, Council President Williams.
Yes.
Who's going to hear that in their sleep tonight?
Hey, we're not done yet. No, that's it for the second and final.
Someone might be saying.
The motion passes. Um, let's go to ordinances on first reading.
Do that.
And then we'll go back to the resolutions. So ordinance on first reading twenty seven forty dash twenty three, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash thirteen, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets and adding subsection seven dash thirteen point one, emergency parking on Linsley Avenue of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange.
Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we go back to the resolutions.
Hmm.
Uh, now the resolutions can be approved on consent, correct?
I, I think there are a couple, there are a couple that just have some questions.
Right.
Yeah, so can we?
But I want to, yeah, I know that.
I don't see why not.
Okay, I just wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
So, yeah, so.
So we have um, resolutions one twenty two dash twenty three through one forty one dash twenty three. Are there any questions regarding any of these resolutions? Yes, can we?
Before you have questions, just let me like, let you know, and maybe I preempt some of your questions. These resolutions um, are put in place, the fee, the same fees that were in place ten minutes ago before you passed the, the ordinance. So when, when you pass the ordinance, the, the, the fees that were in place and the ordinances expire or evaporate. This, these resolutions put the same fee structure back in place.
And it's our understanding that you're going to revise all of those fees and bring them back so that we can vote on them individually by resolution.
And this is just the first tranche of this process. There's probably two or three more tranches of this process to go through. And yes, as part of the budget process, um, we're going to be presenting a review of all, for all fees and recommendations um, moving forward.
Got it.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So do you want to pull the, the resolutions?
No, you, you can't.
Not, I don't want to pull them. I mean, like the questions for the red.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so one twenty, so, okay, so you're going to approve this tonight. So recommendation for one twenty two dash twenty three uh, filming fees.
Hmm.
I had sat in on a class at an, uh, when I was in Boston last week. They recommended, uh, and I was glad to see that.
Should be much higher.
Freaked out. Yeah.
Should be much.
Yeah.
Like.
And also, also we should be charging for catering and holding sites because they come with the total entourage. So if they have to use other multiple sites, we need to, to be on top of that.
One of the nice things about the way we structured this is that the categories are in the ordinance, the, the sub, the, the actual individual items are going to be in the resolution. So if, as we see something, you know, in July, we, we, we say, you know, we really should be charging a fee for that. We can come back. We don't have to read, read.
Person saying.
Rereading.
Yeah.
We can add that new fee by resolution. Um, so it's, it's um, it's going to be mu- much more fluid.
Hmm.
For, for the township.
Yeah. And I'll send you the notes I, 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 I took uh, um, from there. I was reading my picture of the slides. So I, I, I knew you were away, so I didn't send them to you before this. Okay. So that's that one. Question on one thirty nine twenty three cat, outdoor cafes. So where are we at with those in regards to, um, we've always had that on the books. We provided spaces for our restaurants during the pandemic. Certain restaurants now are continuing their spaces. So again, as far as the, the resolution itself now, um, you know, this is, do they have to get a yearly recertification? What's the process or?
You're talking for, Al fresco.
Outdoor, out, outdoor cafes.
Um, that it'll be something else that we will be able to discuss. One of the things that we're looking at as well is, is registrate with, that we're going to be required to do by state law. Just to register all businesses, which we've never done before. So we'll be presenting an ordinance uh, for you that in the future. Um, and, and within that, we can specify, for instance, just uh, if, if, if we're looking for a, a separate license for uh, Al Fresco Dining as opposed to um, a, a um, a single light, a single license for establishment with that. And, and so, so it's certainly something that um, I've seen it done both ways. Um, and this is not just a money grab. Uh, question is whether it makes sense um, for West Orange um, to look at that and evaluate that every year as opposed to, you know, a single license.
And for, excuse me.
And I, I don't really have a position on that.
And Madam Clerk, have they been renewed when they're outdoor? Because don't they have to get something for outdoor liquor?
Of premises. So that, that was my question. How does that affect them? Because the, all the licensees who have liquor licenses during COVID did do an extension.
Yeah.
Premises.
We, 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 we can't, the township cannot usurp uh, ABC law. That's all, that's done, all done under, under.
They'll be okay. Okay, I just want to make sure because I know, you know, spring has sprung, a few of them have kept their spaces and have also really, you know, enhanced more. But yes, they're looking great. So, yeah, they're doing a nice job. So I just want to make sure that
barbecue.
There, none of them are in violation of those spaces. And then um, portable storage containers, one forty. I just want to just question with that fee, is that fee, it, it seems that has to, could get renewed every thirty days. I just don't want to encourage people to leave these obviously on, on their property for any longer than they have to. Obviously, construction may not go well for some uh, homeowners and they may be stuck with their pod, but um, i- if they're not or just, you know, it's cheaper than, obviously this is much lower than a storage site. Um, so I just don't want to encourage. So just when you review those fees, make sure, keep that in mind that we don't want to encourage people to, because now I know storage facilities are astronomical.
Hmm.
And these fees are very nominal, uh, very minimal. So I don't want to encourage that, you know, property maintenance. Same thing with the property maintenance issues also. I know we talked about in the past. Um, you have that first tier and then for second offenders and third offenders to make sure we increase it significantly so the, if bad behavior stops.
You know, I, 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 I think uh, um, it just occurred to me, and this is really maybe a really good time. Right now you have the, for you a list of all the fees uh, that, that are in place. If maybe you would take the time, each of you would take the time to take the agenda and jot down what, what your impression is of these fees. Uh, we may come back and argue with you or, or, or point out things that, but, but, but it certainly would be helpful to me to going into the budgets to have your mind, you know, understand where your heads are at in these things so I can prepare better for it. Um, so that, that would be terrific.
Okay, I'll, I'll type, I'll type out what I said this evening to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, and can we take the uh, resolutions by consent? One twenty two dash twenty three uh, through one forty one dash twenty.
One forty, yeah, one, sorry, sorry.
One forty one dash twenty.
A, a motion to approve those items.
A second.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garpa. Council President Williams.
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. And um, new business spending matters.
Council President, if I may, we, we have, um, I would, uh, point of personal privilege, would like to uh, extend the courtesy to a friend and a resident in town who uh, has been a staunch advocate of the special needs community. Um, unfortunately, timing did not allow her to address us uh, earlier in the meeting. Uh, but would like to allow her the opportunity to uh, read a statement from members of the special needs community if, if uh, that's all right.
Um, I will give two minutes to, to public comment because public comment is over. Um, this will indeed set a precedent that I will be called out on for allowing people to continue to speak after public comment has closed. I understand that i- it may have been inconvenient, um, but our rules are our rules. And because it is Autism Awareness Month, and I do personally have a relationship and know of her advocacy, I am only making this exception because it is Autism Awareness Month. So Ms. Senick, I will give you two minutes to make whatever comments that you have.
Thank you very, very much, all of you. Um, can you just state your name and uh, address for the record? Sure. Krista Senick, twenty six Wedgwood Drive. Thank you. Um, I couldn't be here earlier because I was um, at a WOCPAC meeting. And we were discussing ways that we could, you know, get more advocacy and control over the, the special needs population and awareness. And um, I came to our attention that yesterday was um, the autism flag raising. And you know, we are, uh, WOCPAC stands for West Orange Special Education Parents Advocacy Committee. And none of us knew of this. And all of us on the meeting were really upset. Um, and I understand that um, you want to promote, you know, and, and have a wonderful opportunity. And I, I think it's fantastic. So I, I commend you um, for wanting to have it. However, um, to not include those very people that you are including or talking about including was not right. And especially i- it, it, it needs to be said that today, um, we had a memorial service for a seventeen year old boy with autism. Um, yeah, Stormy Holloway. And to have that, um, yesterday, knowing that he was being laid to rest today, um, it's just not right. And I really, I really feel that if anything, it would have been okay to delay it for him. Um, it's not that often that we have the opportunity to meet somebody like him or somebody like my daughter, whatever. And I just, I think there would have been a better opportunity um, to have his parents maybe be involved, you know, especially knowing that it's autism awareness, especially knowing that um to have his parents maybe be involved, you know, especially knowing that it's autism awareness, and especially knowing that what that family has done for this whole community. And I'm not just, I'm not, this is not meant to be about Stormy, but it just is ironic that this happens at this time. And so I I'm not necessarily speaking for all of WOCPAC. I'm speaking for the members that were on the meeting. And I left the meeting so that I could come here to speak. And so I I greatly appreciate the time. Um, we'd like a do-over. Um, having the opportunity.
Miss.
To have.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to just respond because we did have this same question addressed um from former councilwoman um Cindy Mousue Brown. And she did bring to our attention that WOCPAC was not informed. And we apologize for that misinformation. Um, and certainly we will do better. Um, however, just for the record, um please note that our assistant superintendent was on the program, did speak. Um, and again, we apologize for the lack of communication and we will continue to do better. Um, I don't know, and I appreciate your comments regarding St- Stormy. He is my neighbor, as he is yours. Um, but I don't know that Michelle and Michael um would have felt that way. And and I've been in contact with them since last week, um, you know, to speak to them. And I was at Stormy Services this morning or this afternoon. So we hear you. We will do a better job. Thank you. Um, and again, I I want to just put on the record um that this was an exception. This will not happen. Um, and and again, we appreciate your advocacy.
Council President, can I say something?
Certainly.
Um, if on behalf of the administration first, I want to express our sincere sympathy for loss and of everyone's loss involved in this. Um, this is a, this is a ticklish issue because um while the township did allow this to occur yesterday, it was not a township organized event. Now, so we really, where there was an organization, a foundation came, the township said they'd like to have it on this day and this time. And they filled out the 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 application form for it to have it done. And it was approved for it to occur. So while um not sure I I'm really sensitive to the issues that you bring up. And we have to put some real thought into in this type of circumstance, how we, how we know, how we figure it out all out. And we certainly want to try to do that. But we, I think it's really important that you understand that that that's not the w- the way that you were feeling that it played out is not how it played out. Because we 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 were allowed another group to do this. And we're certainly not in their thought patterns of understanding what, you know, what you understood. So not sure where the disconnect there is. We'll strive as always to 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 do a better job. Um, and and understand that um this likely is is a coincidence of errors. And for that, we're sincerely sorry. And um just hope that you can maybe at least take away from this that that we're on your side in this. And 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 like I said, we'll we'll try to do better job. But we we also have our limitations too. So.
All right, are there, yes.
Well, I have two items, but I I just, you know, I I, Krista, I'm just speechless. I I and I apologize. I've been away and I did not realize this child has passed. And I think it'd be appropriate this time, we could just have a moment of silence for Stormy.
Yeah, we talked about it before the meeting was actually called for order. So yes, um from Councilwoman Castellino's request. Um, we do, we do. And we talked about it in the beginning of the meeting. I'm just understanding the special needs, unique needs of those families uh with autistic children. And so um with that, um Stormy has been a tremendous um shining bright star in this community. Uh, he attended school, new fourth grade in the West Orange School District, and then went out of district uh to a school to better accommodate his needs. Um, his death was tragic and unexpected. And so for that, uh we honor his family. We honor Stormy, and we'll take just a brief moment of silence on his behalf. Yeah. And for all those, and all those certainly, um for all those struggling, again, this is Autism Awareness Month. Um, one of the things that I walked away with uh from Stormy Services is that he loved everyone. Um, and that he taught his family how to love unconditionally, everyone. Um, it is a very, very difficult journey uh to raise autistic children. The caregivers also um have their own unique set of struggles that they endure. Um, but again, we honor and we are aware, um and we and we respect uh your wishes as well. And we hear you. Councilman.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Just wanted to say I uh deeply regret missing yesterday's event. Um, I sent my regrets through uh Council Colley. Um, fortunately, I have solo, had solo daddy duty uh that day and just couldn't make it happen, given my calendar. But I do want to say it is um one of the greatest, uh, one of the shining spots about West Orange um is how embracing we are of the special needs community in general and the services that are provided through our school system. It's a parent of a child who has had NIEP since her very first days in school. And uh because of the efforts of West Orange was able to graduate and get a scholarship and go to college. Um, we see outcomes here that the rest of the country uh should be envious of. Um, and so um while we do get some things right, we don't get them all right. And uh yesterday, uh certainly we could have done better. Um, but uh you you do have our uh you, we we do empathize with you and the entire WOCPAC uh group. Um, and while it wasn't something that we could have necessarily controlled, we will certainly be on the lookout to do better in the future. Uh, and thank you for your courage and conviction to come here tonight and express those opinions. So appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman.
Um, I would like to make a motion, uh well, before I get to that, um Krista, I'm really sorry for your loss, for our township's loss um for your organization as well as family. I echo all my colleagues' sentiments. Um, so, I'm so sorry. Um, I would like to make a motion to reconsider uh the resolution for our public advocate, as I mentioned earlier, in in public comment. And I hope my council colleagues will reconsider and give him an opportunity.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. So it's been moved and properly seconded that we reconsider a motion to support the contracts uh for our public advocate. It is my understanding, because this is a motion to reconsider, that it requires a super majority, that is four votes, not three.
Well, not a motion to reconsider, because a motion re- for to reconsider has to happen in the same meeting in which the vote took place. So it would be a motion to suspend the rules and raise a new resolution to the floor, if you want to do it tonight. Um.
Uh, we don't. So if we are, okay, in that same vein.
Yeah.
We don't have the resolution, and we're talking about bringing a new resolution. So I'm going to ask and remind us that we continue to be consistent. Um, and if this can be done at the next meeting, then I would appreciate that courtesy. Thank you. Uh, so there's a motion on the floor. Um, that's been properly moved and seconded, but it was to.
I guess I'll withdraw the motion because it's irrelevant, right? It's not, it didn't happen in the same meeting, so.
Well, yeah, if it's something you want, it should go on the next meeting. So and not as a motion to reconsider, just as a new resolution.
I would like to see that.
A request that it go back on.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, is there any additional information?
Also, yes.
Yeah, I have two two quick items.
Go ahead, I can wait.
Are you sure?
No, go ahead.
Okay, one is, um, so I brought up earlier with Mr. Gross, and I just had a couple of questions for him, the Lando lot. I know Mr. Lepore had a short, short-term plan he was working on and a long-term plan. Um, and I, obviously, he's not here since his retirement. So has that been completed, the short-term plan prior to his retirement?
We have um, um, like, we've done some layout. Um, the only thing that's in question now is is what I'm unclear on is whether or not the layout includes um any areas that are not in the area in need of redevelopment. Because how, you know, how we would acquire properties in order to do the long term may be impacted by that. So the, and and that's obviously, we now know that that's something we have to look at it differently than we did before. Uh, so.
So I'm going to press you on this because we have a, and we're excited, we have another new business that will be coming to our downtown that will be utilizing that part parking lot, uh a restaurant. So um we are excited about that. And um there's buildings in renovation now, so um, and there's going to be needs. And with the way the, you know, with the the basketball court there and the lack of signage, um, you know, wayfinding and signage, again, I could go to a million conferences. And if we don't change, if nothing changes, nothing changes. And we got to make sure we change so we could have thriving businesses in our downtown corridor.
That there there certainly are some short-term immediate things or relatively immediate things that we could do to increase incrementally additional spaces. What 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 I was talking about and what we were discussing before uh were were, you know, minor things, minor acquisitions or minor movements that we could get to really make a significant difference there as opposed to the major. As far as, you know, if if um the council wants us to look at repurposing um the basketball court, uh we we will certainly can put that together. I have.
Well, not, we don't want a court, we want a driveway.
To parking.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Um, thank you, thank you. So, so I appreciate.
We're we're doing that. And by the way, we're we're in the process of doing.
Yeah.
You know, to to me, the very first thing we have to do, we have to know what our our universe is, what 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 are the realities of the parking schemes there? You know, what are the shortages? When, when are the shortages occurring? So we're we're doing the the council.
It's all day long. It's all day long, according to the business owners. And in regards to the amount of children, because again, none of us would ever want to rip out a basketball court for any child. But there have not been children playing in this court for years.
I think because it's locked. I think the gate is closed.
Now, even prior to that, even prior to that, and it never should have been in that spot. And it was the main driveway. Because now residents don't even know that you, that there's a lot there because of, and it's also going to help with traffic. Because if you're at the light coming towards Town Hall, and I do this all the time, because again, I'm the one person that lives down the hill. Um, you, when you drive Main Street and Washington's on your left and you go through uh um yeah, Washington Schools on your left, you're at that intersection, you drive through that light and uh cars are turning left to go into the lot. And that should only be uh no left turn there. It should be only a right turn because it backs up traffic through the light. And this is constant all day long, no matter what time of day.
Into which lot is this?
Into that Lando lot. So if you could enter it two ways, you could enter it um on Wash- on Washington Avenue, past the firehouse. The original entrance was where the basketball court was, which is a natural entrance. You could even see it from the light. So if you're at that light um on Main Street, going towards Town Hall and Washington Schools on your left-hand side, you could, you would see an entrance there of like to go right into the lot. Now you have to go through the light and in between the buildings to make the left into that lot. And that holds up the traffic at the light because people have their signal and they're waiting because there's a lot of traffic coming the other way. So long story short, it it needs to happen, like, so we can make it happen.
I've 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 imagined.
I've been asking since two thousand sixteen.
Well, and and there will be some funding that's going to be required, especially to open up the gates, because then that will likely have some impact on on the 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 traffic.
Yeah.
In terms of that light and and so the timing of the light. So there there ought to be some money that's going to have to be allocated for that, to do that. What I have imagined and and have looked at it uh in terms of um to the extent that there's a desire, to some extent, to keep both. Um, you, I think, I don't have a, I don't have a, uh, I don't have this engineered yet. But I think it could be set up so where you could, from time to time, close off that area for some type of basketball, you know, use. Um, and then reopen it for for parking you. So you 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 might be, might be able to do that again. I don't know what the, I don't, I really don't know what the vans are.
And the history of this also is prior to the program at Bethany Church, prior to um the middle school program at Edison Middle School, which was about, oh God, almost twenty years ago when I had started that program, that after-school program with Paul Sito. None of those programs were in existence. And to the substation's credit, they provided a programming at that time for the kids in the neighborhood. Now with those two programs in existence, the need lessened. And, you know, the 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 students or the kids in the neighborhood went to the other programs.
Yeah, I am certainly sensitive to the parking issues on Main Street, and we have to do something to support our businesses. I'm hesitant to uh take away an amenity for kids after school, especially when it's already effectively taken away from.
Exactly, but kids have not been there in.
And I I would at least like to see the opportunity presented to them, let them know, hey, there is, there is a basketball court right here. Because, you know, kids bring, um, they bring money. They don't bring their own. They bring mom and dads, but they bring money. These kids, you know, when we used to have kids up at.
Business owners dying, dying there. They're they're.
It's not the kids' fault.
It's not the kids' fault, but it was never a location that is safe for a basketball court to begin with. And you have Washington School right across the street.
Which doesn't have a basketball court.
Which you could make a basketball court.
So now I'd be happy to explore alternatives. Um, and you also have a church across the street that has plenty of space. You have other opportunities in town to to do them. So but if if we're going to remove.
Never going to have a bustling Main Street corridor with, for those business owners if we don't take care of that.
All right, so what we, what we've heard, Cindy Administration indicate, is that they will do an evaluation and they will come back and bring to us um some recommendations and suggestions.
And and again, and I know I get frustrated. We talk about economic developers and spending money there. Um, this is a problem, identifiable problem. We know why our businesses aren't being successful, and we have to uh, we have to attack it.
So I agree. I just think we should be deliberate about it and weigh the pros and cons of removing a basketball court for parking. I I I'm not opposed to additional parking. Uh, I think we got to find more parking.
I I didn't even know the basketball court existed. So for me, for me, um, when I, I I mean, just to add some commentary to the conversation, that's one of the things that the kids always say, we have no place to go play basketball. Uh, we've had O'Connor Park that has had some issues.
Bethany Church.
Well, indoor.
Outdoors.
No, they have a, they have a roll-away goal that's outdoors. Their gym is inside. But again, tonight isn't the time to debate that. Um, Councilwoman, we've heard your concerns. We've heard from the administration. And you've heard us all willingly say, yes, let's evaluate it before we make any decision. So I I think that should be satisfactory.
So in in that vein, since I'm on a roll here, um, so again, not that I want to talk about cannabis at ten oh seven at in the evening, so bear with me, my colleagues. Um, so the way we left this last time is we have an ordinance that is a hundred feet from the school that um LLCs can um not identify all of their uh investors. And uh I have an issue with that. Now, I just want to go back, and it was late when we were debating that. So these conversations get hard and muddied because of the late hours we keep and and uh when we have to tackle these items. So I just want to go back and I I uh, the investors came, they stayed late that night. And again, they're the investors, but we have to protect everyone in the township as well and find that balance. Now, from the very beginning, I was on the task force. And in every single meeting prior to them coming to see you, I had stated the the uh ordinance was going to be amended as we go along. I had fully stated the two hundred feet from the school, so everybody knew that. And that we're making the other changes, making additional changes. Until, and then we thought we protected with the grandfathering clause, all the investors um that had already applied and we gave letter support for. So to to go back on not enforcing that ordinance was very disappointing for me, for all the time I spent on on that committee and and the conversations I had with the interviews with these with these folks. Um, you know, I don't think, you know, one of the problems we had, we had on Main Street are these LLCs and trying to find the actual investors. And with this type of business, um being that there's cash and it could be a little controversial, we need to know who the investors are. I'm sorry, if there's not an issue with this new business coming into. I'm sorry, if there's not an issue with this new business coming into the township, there shouldn't be an issue with us knowing who all the participants are. And, and I, we, we talked about this, we had the support, not all of us, it wasn't unanimous. But we had a majority support to, to protect the, the LLC clause in there. And right now that's open. So why this would be a problem for the investors when they knew changes were coming and we were entitled to our change and why this became a problem? Again, I know it was late hour, but I would like to put this back on and work with legal to get this back on for the two hundred feet, to get it back on with the, uh, LLC that we, we had put in there to, um, we could, I, I'm, I'm not harsh, uh, you know, the point that the one investor made with the, um, uh, with the cultivation, what, he didn't need as much parking as the others. I, I could, you know, we could make that tweaking with the parking. I'm not opposed to that, but my concern is the LLC language needs to apply to all of them. Because you can't have year after year, if they change their investors, we, we need to know.
I would like to second that.
There's no motion on the floor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion on the floor, but you can, but you can certainly have discussion.
Exactly. Um, yeah, I have had outrage from the community too. Because we had agreed on so many things that were reasonable and they said to me, why are the people who want to do business in this town telling the town what to do? People who want to do business in our town should be good partners and they should be working with us for the good of the community and should respect the needs of our community. And I didn't know what to tell them, because I was just as flabbergasted that they were able to come in here and tell us what, how to write our ordinance. We had worked on this for so long and I remember, um, Councilwoman Castellino telling me, I, every time I go in there, I tell them this is a work in progress. They're getting their letter of support, but our ordinance is being written. And I know, because you, you told me clearly, every meeting practically, you expressed that to them. So I don't understand how they could come in here and just say, we don't have, we're not entitled to have any of the safeguards that we need. And we need full disclosure in this type of business. That's adamant, I'm adamant about that. We need full disclosure of who is running these businesses.
I don't think that the issue was the request that we put in. I did, um, take exception to the parking requirements, because I thought that they were excessive.
So maybe we could do.
So I think we need to reconsider the parking requirements that we put into play. And personally for me, um, my concern was that we did no protections to the entities that we had already authorized with letters of support. My issue was that, my understanding was that we were protecting them so that they would not have to come in, um, and be forced. So we didn't have, we didn't have a problem with them changing their, their businesses. That wasn't the issue. But if we're not offering them some protections, then I.
We have to abide by our ordinance.
I understand that, but again. And, and they are, but we can't, it's not them abiding by our ordinances. We still have to give some level of protection to the people we've already welcomed into this community. And, and we didn't do that with that ordinance. That ordinance did not do that. And again, if we want to revisit that ordinance, I am looking for some changes in the parking requirements. And I didn't have any problem with anything else, as long as those entities are protected.
I think we have a higher level of commitment to our residents.
I echo the Council President's statements.
And I would like to revisit it.
If, if I'm making. So, I, just for, uh, public sake, uh, for those that don't really understand the history of this, the reason that failed, um, because we were prepared to deal with it that night, the reason it failed is, one of the attorneys, uh, pointed out rightfully, as far as I'm concerned, that, um, the way we were updating our ordinance did not provide the type of protection that we as a body wanted to provide to those folks that were already in the process. Look, we, we, we may have not done, we certainly didn't do everything right starting out. It's not to place blame on anyone. I mean, it's been a moving target from day one. The state has updated their guidance multiple times and sometimes it's been, um, conflicting with itself. So we are updating, it's been clearly stated by Councilwoman Castellino in both this chamber as well as in the task force, that these kinds of updates will happen. Um, I do think we have support now to both extend the, uh, perimeter away from schools and, you know, so on and so forth, houses of worship. I, I, I do think there is support uh, for full disclosure of all, uh, owners in the, uh, capital structure. And, and I think because those two things were somewhat at odds, um, given what we were trying to do with the grandfathering, it was impossible to actually vote on that at that time. So, uh, to your point, I think if we bring it up the next time, I think we'll have a much smoother, uh, vote than we did the last time. I would encourage us, for those of us that want specific changes in there, to send them to the attorney. But, um, I, I think your points in particular are, are well received.
Yeah, you have to realize tax laws change, accounting laws change. I mean, this is.
And that's fine, but we also have to be mindful as a body that we don't want to set ourselves up for litigation. So we approve them. I, I, shaking your head is one thing, I understand that. The litigation is real. And some of those very entities have already indicated that they are going to sue or will sue. And so you, you have to, you have to take that into consideration. You can't just sit around and say, we're okay with being sued.
Another point with the, excuse me, Council President, another point with the LLC is it's already in the application and they already had to comply with the application to give their, we, we request their operating agreement. So they have to, so again, so the, for them to say that they had issue with the LC really disappointed me. Because that they're already providing that. The only difference is now is if they change your LLC. They have to disclose.
We're comfortable with that, that's not an issue.
Okay, well, nobody was comfortable with it. On everything.
What was happening. I thought we were rewriting this ordinance to.
Okay, so guys, we, we, we all saw something different. So based on the recommendation that we've just had, Councilwoman Castellino has asked that we revisit it. Councilman Rutherford has made a suggestion that we send whatever those changes are to our legal team. So instead of us debating it, because we don't write the legislation, um, let's take that as a direction that we'll move towards. Please, Council colleagues, any other suggestions? And suggestions are one thing, but make sure you have the support to make sure these suggestions can be implemented. So again, not saying that you don't have the support for it, because things can change and people may change. But if you don't have the support to move the distance from one thousand feet, from two hundred feet, which we were all in agreement in, please don't send that in as a recommendation. And also, if you're going to make that recommendation, if you have the votes for it, again, one thousand feet is not going to grandfather and the entities that we've already given a letter of support for. So for me personally, that recommendation is, is, is not rational. Because we would automatically set ourselves up for litigation. Now perhaps, if we want to implement a one thousand square foot radius, it can be to any other entity. But again, but again, we just need to be smart and we also have to protect the municipality.
Well, that's what she was saying. Well, she wasn't saying have this thousand feet affect the current.
I was saying for the rest.
Yeah, so, and what it does is, if these that have a license now end up wanting to move or for whatever reason they go out of business and someone else wants to apply for the new, then they'll have to.
And that's totally fine. If you have the support for the one thousand feet, the number is, right, absolutely.
So just to get clarity, Council President, I, because I'll, I'll work with legal on this. Right, right. So what I'm going to ask them to do is it'll be for two hundred feet with the schools and the language with the church.
Houses of worship.
Houses of worship, sorry.
Take out the.
The only thing that will be, uh, the LLC green, uh, language that we all decided on will be in there. Uh, we'll tweak the parking and we'll figure that out. We'll tweak, tweak the parking. And the only thing that will be grandfathered then would be the number of, um, entities. Because then they'll all be compliant with these other items. So the only thing that will need to be grandfathered is the number of entities that we agree to.
So right now we had the six plus one. Um, one of the comments that we had, and again, you live and you learn, uh, we were saying that we were under the impression that we would be the wee capital of Essex County because no other municipalities had seven licenses. Um, I just want to put on the record factually that Bloomfield will have eight. So if we want to take into consideration perhaps the categories of the types of licenses, that can also be something that we reconsider, but I think that's just still a discussion that we, we may need to have.
And, and, and I know I brought this up, uh, earlier, did a lot of conversations. Of course cannabis was, uh, definitely one of my hot topics and even talking with, uh, folks from Colorado who started the ball rolling with this, uh, many years ago. And, um, other than Bloomfield, even other local municipalities, I, I, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I think we need to be a future discussion because
Agreed.
I think we need to see what's going to happen with these first before we entertain.
I have to tell you, everyone I speak to in the public is outraged that there's so many already.
Okay, so I'm look forward with this and, uh, and get it and then make sure you get in plenty of time so Erby could give the comments.
Excellent. Just make sure if we can get it and then.
Yes, I'll call Mr. Ramon first thing in the morning.
And then we'll need time for us to circulate, for it to be circulated to us and then for us to make responses or comments as well.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the last, uh, comment that I wanted to make was in addition to the fact that it was Autism Awareness Month, April is also Fair Housing Month. Um, so I look forward to bringing an opportunity, uh, to create some fair housing opportunities. I've been speaking with, um, some of our local banks and there is a program, a grant program, um, that will give up to five thousand dollars, um, towards, um, closing costs, down payment. So we're going to do a workshop session on how you can become eligible or apply, um, for that information. Um, dates will be forthcoming. In addition to that, uh, the League of Municipalities has declared, um, this month, look, um, the week of April sixteenth through the twenty-second as Local Municipal Government Week. I have been speaking to the administration about doing a municipal town hall open house. Um, so please stay tuned for additional information. That would just entail us opening up Town Hall, encouraging all of our, um, residents to come in, see how Town Hall functions, uh, see how, uh, what our directors are, who they are, uh, just a, a basic meet and greet. Uh, there are other recommended activities during this week. Um, so Council colleagues, if you want to check out the League of Municipalities website and make any additional recommendations uh, to support Local Municipal Government Week, um, please don't hesitate to do so. That's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. Any opposed?
Motion carries. Meeting closed. Our next meeting will be on April. Our next meeting is on April eighteenth. Uh, we look forward to seeing you. Please have a blessed and safe Easter holiday weekend. Um, for those who celebrate Passover, happy Passover and of course continuing to celebrate Ramadan. Ramadan, a happy fasting and praying. Thank you, West Orange.